We should wind off this time.
Yeah, like you said last time.
Okay.
Are you both on board?
Okay, executive session is ended at 6:57. We'll take three minutes coming back at 7:00 to start the regular meeting.
Meeting will come to order. We have completed an executive session and are now moving to a regular meeting for January 5th, 2015. Welcome to a new year of council meetings. Alec, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Debbie Britlin.
Here.
Councilmember Jane Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Sero.
Here.
Councilmember Tonason. Councilmember Benson Wong. Councilmember Benson Wong. Deputy Mayor Dan Grous.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here, thank you very much. Well, as was alluded to there, we have a sad moment this evening before us. We have special business, recognition of Tonason's service to the citizens of Mercer Island. And for that, I have a resolution to read. Resolution of acknowledgement and commendation for Tonason's service to the citizens of Mercer Island. Whereas, Tonason has served the citizens of Mercer Island with distinction for three years in public office as a member of the Mercer Island City Council. Whereas, Tana was first appointed to the city council in January 2012 and elected to her position in November 2013. Whereas, Tana was recently elected to her first full term in the state of Washington House of Representatives. Whereas, the following were accomplished during Tana's tenure on the city council. Realization and implementation of the Town Center revitalization effort, including launching a development code review process, approving a new project to provide affordable housing, and enacting a code change requiring walk-off parking in new developments. Further the city's sustainability effort by hiring the first-ever sustainability manager and creating the revolving green fund for sustainable projects and efforts. Installation of a solar array at the Mercer Island Community and Event Center to offset energy costs and expansion of a green power program for the city and hundreds of islanders. Authorize the construction of the new South End Fire Station and the acquisition of essential firefighting equipment. Playground upgrades at both Luther Burbank Park and Dean's Children's Park. Approve the future site for the Mercer Island Center for the Arts. Reinstated lifeguards at Groveland Beach. Restricted tobacco use in city parks. Implemented restrictions on merchants of using use of plastic bags. Finalize the city's shoreline management plan. Maintained MIYFS programs, including school counselors, despite financial pressures. Convince the King County Library System Board of Trustees to give more consideration to the desires of islanders for the planned renovation of the city's library and transition to a new city manager. Whereas, Tana's service as a city council liaison is an impressive list of municipal leadership, including Disability Board 2012 to 2013, Economic Development Booster Club 2014, Open Space Conservancy Trust 2014, Parks and Rec Subcommittee 2012 to 2014, Sound Cities Association 2013, Sustainability Policy Task Force 2012 to 2013, Sustainability Subcommittee 2012 to 2014, Town Center Vision Scope Committee 2014, and Utility Board 2012 to 2013. Whereas, Tana will be remembered by her council colleagues for her commitment to sustainability and advocacy of laws designed to ensure that guns are sold only to people who are legally authorized to own them. Whereas, Tana never missed the opportunity to capture those memorable moments for posting on her always-active Facebook site, which I'm sure she'll do right now. Whereas- It's a selfie. Whereas, by stepping down from her position on the city council, Tana is sure to enjoy more time both with her family and with Senator Steve Lizzo, Representative Judy Clipper, and her other new best friends in Olympia. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Mercer Island on behalf of its citizens, the city council commends Tonason for her three years of distinguished public service and extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for her time and many contributions to Mercer Island. Approved this 5th day of January 2015. So- And I understand we get to give you a box.
All right.
So, I don't know. There you go.
Thank you very much.
We didn't sort this out. Any- Photo, comments, Tana, comments, others, how do you-
One last.
There you go. Yes.
Well, before photos, I have some remarks. I have to say that we were really busy these past three years. That's quite a list, and there were a number of things on there that we didn't even have on there. So, it's pretty amazing to look back on the three years. And really, just, I'm so amazed by the dedicated council members that I served with, and we'll definitely miss all of you. And I've learned so much from all of you on different leadership levels and personal levels, and amazed by your areas of passion and personal charm and all of that. And I have to say that I truly think we have the best city staff around. I have seen a lot, and you truly are amazing and show your responsiveness and your respect and your dedication every day. So, thank you to all of you guys. And I really can't believe this is my last meeting, maybe because I'm leaving these bimonthly evening meetings for all-day, everyday meetings. Maybe that's why. But it's pretty amazing. So, while I'm sad to leave this city council, I am very excited to be going down to Olympia and working on important issues that will have impact on Mercer Island and the rest of the state, like tolling on I-90, some of the very reasons why I've been pursued that position on the state level, education funding, gun responsibility, revenue for cities, affordable housing, other human services, protecting the environment, and creating jobs. So, I'm excited to be working on that. But I will really miss this place and the people. So, if you will, will all bear with me. I just wanted to mention a few things that will stay with me for a very long time.
As long as it's not in the form of rap.
It's not a rap. I'll leave that to Jane. So, Benson, your detail-oriented approach, that made a huge difference even literally on day one, on the very first bill you discussed. Jane's important historical context for almost every issue. The wonderful surprise of feelings and the surprise of how often I actually agree with Mike, and but also his dedication, respect, personal warmth, and sincerity.
Thank you.
Debbie's careful look at issues around the policies, paradigms, and principles of every matter, as well as trading off babysitting at meetings and retreats for our kids. Dan's big-picture comments that would take me weeks to put together and somehow would just roll off his tongue around some big issue that would bubble up, and I was really impressed. And my admiration for the calm that Bruce always leads these meetings and responds to my points of process that I bring up here and there. So, very impressive. I'd also like to say that I'll always think of Katie when I say "be the dead horse." Ed is an amazing example of a fair and compassionate police chief, as are Leslie and David. Especially important these days around the unrest with police departments around the country. Budgets will never seem to be as easy as when they're presented by Chip, Loram, and Francie. I might actually now in the future think I am a traffic engineer without being reminded by staff that I'm not. Every time I use a paper towel to wipe off the fog, which is the fats, oils, and grease, off by pots and pans and put in the trash instead of the sink, I will always think of Terry and the others on the utility board. I might actually have to wait a little longer for a fallen tree to be removed from a park by Jason or Glenn's team, but I doubt it, because I think they're responsive, not just because I'm a council member. I hope I never have to hear from Jennifer Franklin, or frankly, that the firefighters never recognize me in the fire station again, because that means there'll be no emergencies, either on Mercer Island or in my family. Steve, I wish you a long tenure as fire chief and a short tenure in the parking lot of the South End Fire Station. Chris, the only table I hope to ever see you across from is the dinner table, not the negotiating table. Scott, I know I can count on you to continue Art Uncorked events and others in Sen Plaza, I mean 78th Street Plaza. Ally and Karen, I look forward to continuing to ask you about dinner recommendations. Ross, Kermit the Frog would love you because you make being green look very easy. Kirsten, the city is very lucky to have you and your wrangling abilities around each and every issue. I hope you all continue to protect the city from losing Mike, although as vice-chair of the Government Information Technology Committee, you better watch out. Cindy, the work of Mercer Island Youth and Family Services has inspired some legislative proposals of my own, and you know I will continue to shop and donate to the Youth and Family Services thrift shop. As for Bruce and Derek, I bet I will see you down in Olympia in your impressive state leadership roles. And in fact, I think I might already have some meetings set up with you. And Noel, or sometimes I call D. Dudley "do right", I hope you keep doing right by the city and holding down the fort. And of course, lastly, but not leastly, I must say that my family, Kevin, Ben, and Rachel, have been so patient and supportive. It's pretty amazing. You keep me grounded on issues affecting families and making sure that I work on those issues every day. And I finally can answer the question that you kids ask me all the time. Yes, indeed, this is my last city council meeting. So, thank you for that. And now, I would love to have a photo so I can put it on my Facebook page and have a good memory as well. So, thank you.
All right. Let's have a photo. How do you want to do it, Tana?
Down here?
Down front?
Yeah.
Can I get your phone?
The official taking of the-
Can we all pull up her names?
We'll do one without a flash. I'm gonna try to be very steady. We'll do one with a flash. Oh, look, it's good. Get rid of that stuff. Oh, yeah.
Now, I can have my family come up with me, with you guys. With one, say again. One, two, three. And now, one more, if people wouldn't mind, and maybe Ira, you would even be willing to take the photo. But I'd love to get along with the staff toward here also, with everybody.
I'll just phrase it like that.
Do you want a picture of the 11th of February?
Okay, now, this time I'll ask you to smile. It's gonna be one, two, and I hit on three. One, two.
I do wonder whether Mercer Island's truly a small town. Wisely not. No, she is.
I am. My kids might be concerned.
Okay. Were there councilmembers wondering? Adrian, okay. So, councilmembers, if you have any comments to make, now is the opportunity. No requirement too, but Jane had her hand up first, then over to Debbie, and then Benson. Remember that?
I don't have a rap or a Dr. Seuss poem, but I just, I did want to say how much I've enjoyed working with Tana over the last three years. It's been a delight, and I've learned a lot from her. And I do have a couple of words in verse. "It rhymes with sauna," she said with a smile, "the first time I met her, mispronouncing her name. It was when she was just coming onto the stage, before she'd achieved notice, attention, dare I say fame. She was young, energetic, savvy, and smart. She was clearly up to the challenge, the fine art of talking with people, debating issues, considering problems, concerns, successes, and miscues. She was appointed to city council three years ago, but not for a minute did she bask in the glow. She got right to work studying budgets and documents, island history and issues, items of consequence. She voiced her opinion on issues large and small, like the importance of green space and safety for all, partnering with schools, boosting the downtown, safe routes to school, keeping the crime rate down. Through hours of meetings that would drag on into the night, she'd never complain, was even-tempered, polite. She'd sometimes bring snacks to keep her blood sugar right, but take away her footrest and be ready for a fight. She was drafted to the big leagues, then elected to her position in the state legislature, fulfilling an ambition to broaden her sphere and goals democratic. Her ascension in state politics was nothing short of dramatic. In barely three years, she's gone from home to the house with the support of citizens, friends, children, and spouse. In Olympia, she rejoins islanders Steve and Judy to achieve her goals and fulfill her new duty. She's gone from the frying pan into the fire of Olympia's gridlock, the partisan mire, the fighting, the grandstanding, inaction in Russia. And by the way, Tana, please dig out Big Bertha. And how about a bill for transportation funding? Traffic's a mess. Don't leave citizens wondering if bridges will collapse or the roads are too old. Find the answer that works, one that doesn't mean tolls. And while we're at it, please pay for our schools, the state's top priority, so say the rules. Let's stop talking about it, pay up, end the debate if there's to be a future for our children in this evergreen state. There are challenges aplenty, solid answers are few. We hope our lawmakers, to their oaths, remain true. To Tana, I say farewell, good luck, and Godspeed. Represent the 41st District with strength and good deeds. I'll see you in Starbucks, on Facebook, and more, and certainly in the aisle of the grocery store. We owe you a debt for all you've accomplished. You're true to your word. May you make good on your promise." Thank you.
Debbie. It's gotta be brief after that one. Just a super thanks to Tana, who started on this journey with me and obviously accelerated dramatically. You've been a great friend, you've been a great council member, and I'm just so proud to have you in this state. But I will miss having you by my side, yet I'm sure you'll be with us figuratively. So, thanks, and go get 'em.
Benson.
I certainly don't have a line, but I certainly have enjoyed having you as a seatmate, even just for one year. And I think I've learned and really admire your passion, your sensitivity to issues. And we are blessed, and the state is blessed and the city is blessed to have you represent us, and so I wish you the best down there.
Mike?
Tana, it's been wonderful having you on the council, and you've done a fantastic job on the council. You have done and will continue to do a great job representing not only Mercer Island, but the 41st District at the House. Godspeed to you, good luck. And it's really gonna be wonderful seeing you represent us at the House.
I don't know. It's been fascinating watching your career. It's because it's, I mean, you're almost doing better than Alan Merkel did in managing to run every time unopposed. And it's- run every time unopposed, and it's really been impressive, because it's really a testament to how strong a candidate and how strong an individual you are, that you're able to be on the council and now in the House with zero or minimal opposition, and because even those who might disagree with you recognize how formidable you are as a person and as an elected. And there's good reason for that. I think that it's really been, it's been a wonderful three years to have your intelligence and your wit and your personality on the council, and you're going to be sorely missed. The requirements for those of the eleven, for one of the eleven who will succeed you is you've got to be at least as personal as Tana has been, which will be very difficult to be. But, so, I really appreciate everything you've done and will sorely miss your contribution to the council, but like everybody else, I fully expect you to do great things in Olympia and God knows where else your trail may take you.
Well, and I can't add much to what's been said, other than it's been a real treat to watch you go from the candidate amongst candidates three years ago and see you grow into the position here and now on into the state legislature. You're someone who I've always counted on in council conversations and debates to be one who could really bring a thoughtful and oftentimes somewhat unique perspective to an issue that often sliced through much of the debate and let us look at it in a different way, and I think that is a real asset to you, and I'm sure one that will serve you well as you go forward. So, best of luck to you, and thank you very much for your service. Okay. Okay, we, tonight, the agenda for this evening, we will be adding a extra item. We'll put it in front of regular business. It is a small discussion about how we're going to handle the candidate interview process tomorrow night. So, if you're a candidate, you'll want to stick around for at least the beginning of the meeting with that. Other than that, the agenda is as it's set here. We move to appearances, which is a moment when anyone may address the council on any interest, issue of interest to them. You have three minutes. Please begin by introducing yourself and giving us your address. Rules of engagement are pretty simple, all on the back wall, but it boils down to just please be civil. So, with that, anyone who wishes to address the councils, welcome to come on up. Come on up. Welcome.
I'm Bob Ellis, Forty-two Thirty-six Eighty. Fifth Avenue Southeast. And as I was sitting with my wife back east for our family vacation, I was thinking about this mess that we have on the hill and trying to get parking, and you guys have probably been through it, so I just wanted to throw an idea out, and all I need to hear is, oh, well, this just doesn't work, we've been through that. I was trying to address this from the point of view of what would Audrey Davis do? So, I was thinking like Audrey, at least I think I was. He dealt with the I-90 going through, and it was going to be this horrible blight that cut through and destroyed our island, and he worked with the people who were gonna come in, instead of fighting them, said, okay, if you gotta do this, then let's do it so that we get something from it and it doesn't blight our city. If we're going to do something like put a parking lot where we have this green hill, we should be able to negotiate, we should be able to do the same thing Audrey did, we should be able to put a large parking lot in there or somewhere else, and finish by capping it with grass and other foliage so it doesn't blight our city, and it can go as deep as it needs to to fill all of the area. When you start talking to people who really need to have us find an answer, all of a sudden, they may be willing to spend a little more than they were. If you've already addressed it, just tell me, but if not, it's an idea I'd like to have you at least look at. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we will be talking about that in a bit. Welcome.
How are you doing? Coming back from vacation, how are you? Congratulations and goodbye. Sorry we didn't get a chance to work together that much. Anyways, I just wanted to thank the three council members for pulling back on the proposal to pave over Luther Burbank and the community center property, I think.
I'm sorry, you need to give your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, okay. Tom Ackers, yeah. Oh, no, I don't live there anymore. Mercer Island, Washington, Two-Four-Two-Seven-Eighty-Fourth Avenue Southeast. But, yeah, I've lived here most of fifty years, and I'm glad to be back, and I just really appreciate that you all wrote that letter and are coming off of that position. I know that it was just an out-of-the-box brainstorming idea, and it really is the right thing for the community, it's the right thing for the broader region too, to protect parkland like that. We don't want to lose an asset like that to asphalt. But I'd also, I'm looking forward to working with all of you. We have our coalition that started now, the Save Our Suburbs Coalition that many of the folks here are part of, and really look forward to working with you on managing density and growth responsibly so that we don't end up with a big city and our small town of twenty-two thousand-plus residents. So, that's all I really had to say. You know, it's a big issue, it's not an easy one to resolve, and we have to look at a lot of things like the integrity of our services being compromised if we don't manage it well. So, look forward to seeing you in the future, and congratulations again, Tana. I know you're gonna miss this place. And I love that poem, Jane, that was great.
All right. Anyone else? Mark Mar.
Hi, Bruce. Ira Appleman, Four-Four-Three-Six Ferncroft Road. I'm known as one who will not pass up an opportunity to praise the council, and...
It's not April Fool's yet.
After this parking garage disaster, what we found out was that in 2006, the council made a great decision passing a master plan for Luther Burbank and its surrounds, and designating West Hill, which is the hilly area that we've been talking about for the parking garage, as open space, and I think that was a really great decision, and the council deserves to be congratulated for doing that. And I, when the question of whether that had been done came forward, I circulated a lot of documents from 2006 showing that the council not only did pass the master plan on April Seventeenth, 2006, which protected West Hill as open space, but they had a long discussion the meeting before, on April Third, 2006, in which they specifically discussed it and made that decision. So, what I would suggest is that since what we've done here is we've found that lots of people use West Hill and they really enjoy it, and it's like the destination for their run, or they go up there just to see the view or whatever, and I suggest we have a naming contest for West Hill that the city conduct, and that also, since it is somewhat unique in the sense that we don't have that many view properties or hilly properties at any tops of hills, and I suggest that we schedule events yearly on West Hill, since people enjoy it now and are using it anyway, such as a kite-flying festival or something like that for the Riverland Heart, and that the city do that, do the scheduling, and maybe, see, and maybe we'll come up with a great name instead of Kite Hill, which some people may like. Otherwise, on the schedule, I noticed in your legislative priorities that you're not attacking the Public Records Act this year, and I'm wondering if that's an oversight. I guess we'll find out later on in the meeting. But two, three years ago, you guys said that the single record request was gonna bankrupt the city or something like that, but I noticed that the auditor's report on the city came out today, and the city isn't bankrupt. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a new era. Ira speaking well of the council, finishing seconds before his time is up. What's happened to this world? Anyone else? All right, with that, we'll close public comments. Thank you all. We'll move to minutes. We have two sets of minutes. I could have motions for those.
I move to approve the study session and regular meeting minutes of November Third, 2014. Second.
A discussion. On favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
I move to approve the study session and regular meeting minutes of the December First, 2014 meeting.
A discussion. On favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And we'll move to consent calendar. We have payables and payroll.
Move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
On favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. We'll move to regular business, and as I mentioned, we're gonna start with a discussion about the interview process for the candidates tomorrow night, if I can get to my notes on that. Here they are. So, we've had eleven citizens put their names in as applicants for Tana's position, and we, I think first and foremost, want to thank each of you for volunteering your time and talent to this process and to making our community an even better place than it already is. Three, then, pieces of business with relation to that. First, the paperwork you've received says that the swearing-in will occur on January Twentieth after the next meeting, the meeting at which, or after the meeting at which we appoint the individual to that position. If the individual wishes that to be the case, we certainly can, but if the individual wishes to defer until the meeting at February Two and have their family present, that too would be acceptable. We have the planning session in between, but the planning session's not a moment at which we make decisions, and so participating in the planning session is still fine, even though not yet sworn in. Number two, I was asked the question, is it okay for candidates to communicate with council members outside the formality of this forum? And the answer is yes. In the week or two ahead, you are more than welcome to contact council members, ask to set up coffee with them, have a phone conversation with them, and they likewise may do the same with you. Whether that happens with a particular candidate and all council members, or a council member and all candidates, is entirely up to the desires of the council member, the candidates, and their individual schedules, whether they wish to do that. Three, and this is the point on which I sent email to the council. So, in the past go-round on this, there was a bit of awkwardness around the question of questioning the candidates during their three-to-five-minute talks, and what I would propose that we do this time around, and I've proposed this to the council, is that we give the candidates their three-to-five minutes, as has been said previously, but then additionally, we provide a list of questions that the candidates, at their discretion, at their option, could take on, and give each of them an optional additional three minutes after all of the candidates have spoken, during which they could address one or more of those questions if they chose to. I think we'll, because we have eleven folks, we should still be done by eight o'clock that evening if we move through it pretty briskly, and I would suggest that that gives us a chance to put questions out there and let them take them in a fashion that it seems like it makes sense. Dan, you had an alternative suggestion, why don't you go ahead and speak to that, and then we can have a council-wide conversation about how the rest of you would like to proceed and figure out where we're going.
It would be essentially very similar, that we'd have a separate question period at the end of the eleven presentations, but I just felt that we should make it a little bit more structured, instead of telling the eleven people, you know, here's your list of questions, you pick zero or ten of them, or whatever you want to pick. It's sort of, if I'm one of the eleven, I'm sitting there saying, so what am I supposed to do? Am I supposed to try to answer all of them, or should I just try to pick the most interesting ones, and what if I don't pick that one? How are the people gonna interpret it? I would rather just create a, as I said in the email I sent you all, three panels, Four-Four-Three, and have Noel take the questions, and have one panel do two questions, one panel do another two questions, and the third panel do another two questions, and they'd all be different questions. We'd give the questions in advance to the eleven people, so they would know that they're gonna get one of the, well, two of those of that list of questions, and then they, at least, they all have to answer, it's more structured, they all answer two specific questions that go to their panel. I suggested not having all eleven do it, the same questions, because then it gets boring and monotonous, and people keep trying to come up with something original, which is very difficult after, if you're the eleventh person. So, that was the idea. It's still, the idea is you answer a couple of questions, and the difference between mine and Bruce, I guess, is that Bruce would allow them to pick any questions they want or no questions, and I was just trying to make it more structured.
So, council members, what would you like to do? Dan, Mike, your first.
I kind of like having all the council, I'm a little bit apprehended about that Four-Four-Three because of the structure, and we'd like to put some randomness in it, and I'll suggest, you know, run the numbers on the number of questions we can ask, and actually, I don't care if we go till ten, or nine, or eight, but whatever you determine, Mr. Mayor, and then all the questions that we have dictated goes into a hat, and each candidate pulls from the hat and answers the question. That question goes back into the hat, so another candidate can have the same random choice of answering the question. Inevitably, you know, it's very important that we are fair through this process. Inevitably, if you do a Four-Four-Three, inevitably, if you identify particular questions with particular candidates, there could be a boo-ha-ha about it. So, my suggestion is stick with the mayor's plan, with the addition of all the questions go into a hat, each candidate randomly selects the questions they ask, and each candidate has an equal opportunity to all the questions.
Okay, now we've got three ideas on the table, so the rest of you help, and Todd, I assume you're sitting out this discussion, but, okay. Benson.
If you can go through yours, Mayor, I mean, how many questions will each person be asked, I guess, under your scenario?
Yeah, so, under my scenario, what I'd propose was each council member could put forth up to two questions, one or two questions, zero to two questions. Those questions would all go to City Clerk, who would compile them into a list, and the list would go out to the candidates this evening, or tomorrow morning, if it can't happen this evening, and so the candidate would have up to six times two, a total of twelve questions, from which to choose. They might opt to do one, they might opt to do all twelve of the questions, really at those questions.
So, in three-to-five minutes, they would answer as many questions as?
As they felt, or I would assume they would cherry pick the ones that they thought they, you know, would find most interesting to answer, or thought would...
You know, having gone through that process, I guess, I sort of like the, actually, the one that has a little bit more structure, but I guess, because I remember council members did ask questions from, I think, I like the idea of having questions given in advance, and I also think I like the deputy mayor's proposal, because it does give a little bit more structure. I just would want to make sure that everybody has ample time to answer more than a couple of questions. I'm not ready to get it out at 8:00 PM because this is pretty important, and we have eleven people, and we need to make sure we have enough time to get a full flavor of each candidate. So, I hope that we're not locked into 8:00 PM, that maybe can go an extra time.
And no, I don't think we are. I just, I was thinking we got a meeting tonight and another meeting tomorrow night, but we'll go as long as folks want to go. Debbie, Jane?
I do like the idea of each of the candidates being able to pick one, if not two, of the questions they would most like to answer, because I'm sure across the six of us, we will cover a spectrum of issues or perspectives that we would like to hear from, but I also want the chance for each of the respective applicants to show their own flavor, which might be very difficult if the question is prescribed or is only picked out of a hat. So, I would like the chance for the candidates to take or select from a list and speak to what is most important to them, most passionate to them, or most concerning to them, and go from there. So, if the forum is just each of the eleven, or if we break it into the panels, I'm not really excited, but I do want each of them to have the chance to put their own personal stamp on responding to... on responding to one of the six to 12 questions that come forward.
Well, I agree. I think it's, it makes sense, I like the idea of having a couple of questions that people can think about and be prepared for, but I think there should be some real spontaneous, so that they can't choose every question that they want to answer. What was deadly before, as I recall too, was the feeling, as you're sitting out there hearing another fellow candidate answer a question, and there was a feeling like everybody has to answer the same question, and it was horrible if you were the last one. I mean, so I really think we need to mix up the questions, having maybe two questions that the candidates themselves come up with, and then another one that we pull from the list, or that's, that they don't choose. Let's try have a hybrid of...
Yeah, I think we have six possible. Are you ready to solve that?
Yeah, well, no, not quite, but hopefully this helps a little bit. Just a reminder as to what we've already planned for the format, and that is that in the candidate's initial three to five minutes, we've queued up, and you haven't your agenda bill for tomorrow night, that the primary questions we want them to address in that first chunk of time. So we sort of already have both in the prescribed, sort of basic questions about why they want to serve, what they bring as their strengths, and those sort of basic questions. So you've, they're already coming in with three, I think we have three, correct, Ally? Three primary questions.
And that is the heart of this, and I think we should keep that in mind. What I was trying to do is deal with that second level of questions, and give it a little bit more comfortable structure than it had last time around. Well, let me try this. I heard two people say panels, and maybe even a third say panel format. Okay, let's assume that it's, it sounds like there's a trend in that direction. So let's assume it's a panel format. Now, assuming that it is that, though, why don't you put, tell us how you think it works again, and then let's work off of that to see whether others agree with that.
Well, I mean, my suggestion is if Noel, for example, gets 12 questions from us, that he would look through them.
And by the way, Ally, how many questions are we at right now? Because we may not have 12 questions unless council members can multitask here.
I'm allowed to.
You would, okay.
We regret you an extension of time, yes.
The trade-off, of course, is the candidates are going to want some time to answer, so we don't want to let council members get late in giving this to you, and...
I have 11 questions.
You do?
Okay, so if we get two more from Debbie, or what, so if we end up with, how do we get 11?
Somebody came in an extra one.
I did submit a bonus question.
Two people putting three questions.
Okay. We've got 10-plus questions.
My votes.
Assuming we have 12 questions...
My vote question was pretty simple.
If everyone follows the mayor's direction, we have 12 questions.
I'll sacrifice one.
Okay, Dan, how's it going?
So we have 12 questions, and then Noel will look through the 12 questions. Then, in my view, he would take six of them, which he thought were the best questions. He would then put two for Panel A, two for Panel B, and two for Panel C. And he would distribute, we would distribute tonight all, or ideally, we'd distribute the six questions, if we have to, all 12 questions, but distribute the six questions, and so the panel, the candidates would know that they would receive two of those six questions. So they'd have to be prepared to answer all six, but they actually, when we get here tomorrow night, Noel will then decide which panel, you're splitting up the questions fairly, so Panel A gets Questions 1 and 3, and Panel, you know, B gets Questions 2 and 4, and Panel C gets Panel Questions 3 and 6, or whatever it comes out to be. So that way, so it's just, leaving it completely up to Noel to make the decisions, looking at the quality of the questions, spreading them out, so we got a fairness in the panels. He's got no axe in this thing to grind, and it's easy to...
So council members, does that work?
Well, no, I mean, I don't like, no disrespect to the city manager, the best questions. What are you suggesting are the best questions?
I don't know.
There's so much that can be, you know, it gets into that fairness issue, or agenda issue, you know, that's the beauty of randomness, picking the questions out of the hat.
Mike, I guess my feeling would be that if you submitted a question which didn't get asked, there would be nothing that precludes you from separately, you know, between the 6th and the, whenever we're deciding this, the 19th, from asking that question to the individual candidates, and those that I assume they'll answer to. If, you know, and any one of us says that prerogative. I'm just trying to come up with a process that, and willing to defer the city manager to make that decision, and what the right questions, what the best questions are.
Well, let me suggest that, again, no disrespect to the city manager, but take the city manager out of it, and you give the candidates the 11 questions, they understand those 11 questions the best they can, and then at the very beginning, the first thing we do is pull from the hat, random six questions, we go from there.
Other council members?
Well, thank, just to help me, Ally, looking at the 11 questions, is there any overlap between the 11? Because if there's multiple of them that sound similar, and people end up answering the same question, or 11 people, or seven people answer the same question, you're right, a little bit of a spark goes out of the process.
Miraculously, they're all pretty different.
Okay.
Yeah. I really thought I was going to get a lot of the, what are your strengths and what are your weaknesses, but there might be one or two that's kind of the same, but they're very well thought out, very well written, so it's, I'm impressed. They're good questions. I don't, that did not help you, I'm so sorry.
What I would suggest then is, you know, sort of split the difference is that, you know, whether it's in the panels or not, or maybe we've assumed we're going to have the panels, that each person, that there's one of two questions that they must answer, and then they pull a third one from a hat.
Yeah.
It just seems like we're looking for complicating things a little bit.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I like, I'm going back to Dan's proposal, only because it does, it requires everybody to prepare for all the questions. I am happy to defer to Noel to actually sift through the 11 down to six, or whatever it is. Somebody's going to have to sift through those questions, and so I, it seems to me it's a rational way to narrow things down. And yet, there's going to be spontaneity, because nobody's going to know what two questions are going to be assigned to their particular panel. Right? You know, again, based on my experience, you don't want to be the last person who has to answer the question. I mean, so I think it's a good idea to have these panels, because it breaks down the numbers of people who have to respond to a question. And so I want to be fair to all the candidates who are out there, so.
Okay. Jane?
Well, I'm siding now with Mike. I really think if we want spontaneity, if we're giving the candidates all 11 or 12 questions that they can think about tonight, then let's go one by one, and they draw out of the hat and answer the question, and then they go to the next one, and we just keep going that way. Totally random.
Like, what you suggested was, I just need to clarify for a moment. What you suggested was that each panel, there would be a drawing of two out of the hat for that panel, and all the members of the panel would address...
Who needs a panel to do this?
The crock, well, I mean, I'm, just put the ram...
We are beating it at horse.
No, just to put the randomness into it, whether it's your plan, Mr. Mayor, or the deputy mayor's plan, that's fine, but whenever you pick the questions, do the randomness part of it. You know, whether it's going to be, each question, that each candidate is a random choice, or whether it's Dan's structure, just put the randomness of selecting all 11 questions, of having the potential of choosing all 11 questions.
Okay. Debbie?
I think we are getting to the point where we might be overthinking or overcomplicating it. I would be very comfortable with having you and Noel make a decision how you want to proceed. I think all of them are variations on a good theme.
That's where you, I'm going to support Dan's approach, but that gets me, Debbie, and Dan, but if you were, you were with Dan, okay. Noel, you get to pick, okay?
Okay.
All right. Let's move on, please. Okay. So, Ally, you will put out an email to the folks, so is anyone not...
With whatever Noel decides.
With, or you're going to decide first, and put out only the six?
Yeah, if I'm tracking Dan's, we're going to narrow it to six questions, and put out those six to everyone, and then when they get here tomorrow night, they will be told which of the two they have been assigned.
Okay, good.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, we move on to now the regular, regular business. Agenda Bill 502, non commuter parking options update, and, no, you're going to kick this off.
Yeah, I'll kick this off, thank you. As you might recall, when you last discussed commuter parking in a formal council meeting, one of the things that came out of that was a pretty clear direction that we go back and start looking at alternatives to the community center site. So following your last meeting, we engaged a consultant who's helped us with analyzing parking questions in the past. We worked with him to create a list of potential other sites for commuter parking. We have a pretty good list, you know, a number of those are sites that have been discussed historically, but we also had a number of new ideas emerge that we're also looking at. So his work is well underway, we expect to get a draft report from him by the middle of the month, and then we will share that with council, and certainly the public. In the meantime, of course, since your last council meeting, the subcommittee of the council members that was working on this made a recommendation to us and to you that we suspend, or that we stop further study of the community centers of site. And based on that recommendation, we as staff have suspended further study and analysis of that option. But one thing I want to just check in with, since this hasn't yet been to the full council, is that the full council is all on board with us stopping analysis of the community center site at this point.
So this is, it's not a formal vote, but a thumbs-up, thumbs-down, so the subcommittee has suggested this, as, of course, you read in the paper and saw an email form from us, but I now want to bring this to the full council for approval or rejection. So thumbs-up says, stop the community center analysis, thumbs-down says, is that right? Thumbs-down says, keep it going. So some thumbs-up is supportive of the position taken by the subcommittee.
Okay, okay, good.
It's unanimous.
It's unanimous. So we will, so with that, we will continue the analysis on the other options that have emerged, and then at the same time, obviously, it's very important that we continue to engage the public every step of the way. So I want to turn it over to Kirsten Taylor, Assistant City Manager, and Ross Freeman, our Communications and Sustainability Manager, to talk with you a little bit more about our initial planning for public outreach.
We have a brief update on public involvement regarding the commuter parking options. We also want to say that we're going to be coordinating our community engagement and public involvement for several areas of work this year, including parking and the bus intercept options, including the town center zoning efforts that are likely to be undertaken this year, and also addressing metro service additions which will address our September 14, 2014 bus cuts. So all of those are going to be really important public engagement areas, and we will be focusing all of those. Tonight, we're just going to talk about the commuter parking, some of our near-term actions that will be taking place. As Mayor mentioned, we will receive the consultant report in mid-January. There will be a parking option presentation at the council planning session, and then we are planning a public open house.
And just, Kirsten, for the public who might not know, the council planning session happens the weekend of January 23, 24, 25?
Yes. And then we will have a public open house...
I'm sorry, and I'm going to do one more. And that is open to the public, and the timing of that discussion is Friday evening, or Friday afternoon, if I'm not mistaken. So the public is welcome to listen to that update if they choose to. It'll be at the community center, in one of the, one of the regular classrooms there in the afternoon, starting, I think, we start at 3, and Noel, do you...
Yeah, yeah, we start at 3, and I don't think the parking and bus intercept comes up probably until about 4.
Okay. So for those who are particularly interested in that, mark your calendar.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing I'd just highlight is, at this point, staff isn't coming to the planning session proposing any decisions or action by council on parking or bus intercept. This is purely a time for us to have presented to you the initial draft of the consultant's report, so just so you can see it, so the public can start to see it, and then following that, as Kirsten's going to talk more about, is we will then kick off public engagement to get that input before we get to any decision points.
You know, about that, there is a significant, it seems like an organized, public movement, and we've got precedent for interested stakeholders, although I recognize, and it's fair for the public to know, that we don't do public appearances, per se, during our planning session. But should the council reach out to this group of concerned citizens that's getting more and more initiative, inertia behind them, to maybe present their perspective of the parking and the other concerns that they have?
So I would suggest for the planning session, what they're coming to next is that a public open house probably happens in the week after the planning session, and I think that's going to be an important point at which we've got a bit more data and a lot more coming in from the public, and a great time for those folks to engage. And then it'll come back to council with that public input plus the consultant's input. So I would suggest probably the planning session's not the right time for that, but right after that is, yeah.
Okay, let's keep that line of communication open with them, and to engage with the perspective that they have to the council, possibly directly.
Okay. So I've sort of...
Which is a perfect segue.
Sorry about that.
Just to say for the record that we are planning an open house for either a week or two weeks after the council planning session, we just have to work out the logistics on that. And we also are planning how to broaden our outreach to stakeholders, organizations, clubs, groups, individuals, all of the above. So we also have a communications and public comment planned, and I'll turn that over to Ross.
Yeah, some of these channels will look familiar to you from some of our other campaigns, and from the recent groundwater incident, but the way that we can get messages out about these things are through some of our pretty well-known channels, obviously, the weekly e-newsletter, which I encourage people to sign up for if they don't receive already, news releases. We can set up a dedicated city page on this. I actually already have a fair bit of content on the first concept, that would be at the community center idea, and we will enhance that page. Frequently asked questions, that's something that is quite useful when these kinds of issues come up. A lot of times, we find ourselves answering the same questions from a number of the public, so I think that'll be useful. We now have really pretty great sign-ups on our social media platforms, and that's a great avenue for us to announce meetings, and really are seeing a lot of engagement through Nextdoor.com. We're almost up to 2,000 households now that are using that service, and that's a great way for us to put information out, because then people really easily can forward that on to their neighbors and have those discussions about important community issues. As we alluded to earlier, there will be an open house, town hall-style meeting, and we will be receiving comments at that. We'd like to hear from individual stake, groups of stakeholders, whoever those may be. And then we can set up a specific email address to receive comments on this issue, as we have done in the past for some others.
And that's our brief update.
Council members, any discussion questions at this point on the process we're moving into going forward here? Debbie?
Yeah, I'd like to thank staff, and I look forward to seeing, you know, the work progress, and obviously become a little bit more crisp in terms of the dates, the particular forums, and the particular topics, but just to reiterate that I, at least, and I suspect the council as a whole, feels that it is very important to put in front of the public, in a robust number of forums, the various issues that are related, sometimes interdependent, as we look forward to, you know, the evolution of the transportation and town center development issues. So, thank you in advance. We'll report, I think, at the Planning Commission then, to see what is that sort of broader outreach. We'll report, I think, at the Planning Commission then to see what is that sort of broader outreach structure, and it will be posted to the website through various other communication. We look forward to seeing the different groups, individuals, stakeholders continue and pursue a robust dialogue with us. So thanks.
Mike from the Benson.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I don't know where this fits in this discussion, but a couple of areas that's come up to me that I would like are investigation of this issue that I'm going to throw to staff or the council, is that we talk about better enforcement, or what enforcement of parking regulations in the Central Business District may give to us, and also a look at the code or the wide flexibility we have in stalls per size, or stalls per, there's some ratio there, and use as the wide range of parking availability ratio, using the legacy property compared to the, the property to the north of that, compared to the new, what's the new property, what's the Heinz, the Heinz property? And I just looked at the legacy parking ratio compared to the Heinz parking ratio, and the variation is wide to where, to relieve, to relieve some parking with new construction, we might want to look at tight, how to tighten that up, that ratio, up to a more liberal, I hate to use that word, a more liberal parking ratio.
You know what that word is?
I was just going to ask, but can you say liberal parking?
Right, right, exactly. If you go into the pretext that there's a parking issue in the Central Business District, then a parking ratio that has more parking, okay? And use examples of the wide variation, Heinz to legacy to the north, property to the north of legacy.
Well, do you feel like that fits easily within stuff you're doing? Do you want more discussion by council as to whether that's direction that actually is supported by council? Tell me you have.
Well, no, I think those are definitely elements of, as we're looking at our town center, how we might do the best we can with what we've got in terms of how many parking stalls to require and how we're enforcing parking. I think those are some of the things for us to think about, yes.
You feel like that-
That might be a little different than what we talk about in some of these public forums, but I think they're legitimate things for us to look at as part of this whole mix, yes.
Okay.
And on the liberal parking, I'm taking that to mean we need more Prius parking, is that how that-
All right, Benson to you.
The devil's in the details, but I think this communications and public comment provides a nice framework to start with, and certainly appreciate the time that the staff is going to be putting into it. I know that they've already started. But I also want to thank the public for reminding city council and staff periodically that we need to keep everybody informed of what's going on. There is a lot going on, and everything's related. And so people sometimes focus on individual issues, but, you know, whether it's transportation, parking ride, town center development, everything is related right now. And so I think it's a good thing that we are trying to coordinate the communication and outreach to the public, and look forward to people continuing to participate and engage in the process.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, I consider that wrapped up. Ross and Kirsten, thank you very much for your work. We'll move to Agenda Bill 502-8 zoning code text amendment related to the requirements for wireless communication facilities, first reading. Welcome, George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, George Steyer, Principal Planner for the City of Mercer Island. So what we have today before us, just for the public who may not be aware, is an application. We've received an application from Bush Law Firm representing AT&amp;T Wireless. So as you know, anytime we receive an application, we have to process that application. State law requires that it goes before the Planning Commission and then the city council, so that's where we are today, processing the application. So the language that is in the ordinance was proposed, for the most part, by the applicant, minor tweaks by staff for clarification, just for consistency, and then the Planning Commission's recommendation, which you have in front of you there. So I'll briefly provide a summary of what the ordinance would allow. One, WCFs, or wireless communication facilities, would be allowed at Island Crest Way south of the ball fields. That includes the right-of-way adjacent to the ball fields there and the middle school. The second one is that WCFs would be allowed in the multifamily zone at 28th and 61st. There's an existing grandfathered-in wireless communication facility there, so that would, this ordinance would allow basically the four buildings or the four parcels in that area to have wireless communication facilities and to make the existing non-conforming use conforming.
How did you get grandfathered in?
My understanding is, it happened a little bit before I got here. My understanding is that that was put in place legally with a building permit, because the city did not have an ordinance prohibiting wireless communication facilities at that time.
And it's on, I was trying to look on Google Earth as to what that is. It looks like there's, there's obviously four buildings on that corner. How many of the, how many of those lots are actually multifamily? How many of those corners, are all four corners multifamily?
Yes, all four parcels of those corners are multifamily, yes.
Three.
There's four, the four corners.
No, there's four corners on it.
Yeah, I didn't know, but that's why I was asking if all four are multifamily. But if you've got one existing use, why would you, why would you then extend it to all four corners? Why wouldn't you just deal with the one corner where you've got it?
Let me grab Councilmember Bertland's real quick, and here's a thing.
So you want them to be single-family, don't you?
Yeah, I don't know if it's-
Yes, so they're, so the zoning is multifamily, the uses are not necessarily multifamily. So on the southeast corner, there's a triplex that went in, I think, in '08, but it was single-family before that, so that was a tear-down rebuild. So the ones on the west side, yeah, single-family.
Yeah. But why would you, why, I'm just, if the specific purpose of that provision is to just deal with an existing non-conforming, why don't you just limit it to the one corner where you've, one of the four corners which you've got that problem on?
So that is a great question for the applicant. Why did they propose to do the whole thing? And that's certainly within the purview of the city council to say, no, we're only going to do it for one parcel or no parcel. So we're just moving the application forward.
So let's proceed through the presentation and then begin to parse these things after that.
Small cell facilities, which I'll talk about in a second here, a little bit more in greater details, they are not included in the definition of wireless communication facilities, but it would allow small cell facilities pretty much throughout the island. And then the fourth one is changes to the current code that would essentially implement the FCC rules. And this starts on page eight and goes through page 10 of the agenda bill there, section K. So there were some minor changes to the FCC rules to add some clarification, because that FCC rule is a little vague in certain sections. I can talk about that a little bit more, or have the applicant talk about that as well. So to answer your questions that I anticipate coming, where are WCFs, wireless communication facilities, allowed today, and where would they be allowed with the proposed ordinance or the application that we have before us? So shown in purple are the hatched areas for the most part, are the current allowed locations, and then Island Crest Way, and then you'll notice the parks down here and the south end QFC Shopping Center there, and then again on Island Crest Way. So the allowed locations, I just put it into that only because it would stand out a little bit more. That was the only reason. Like I mentioned, the middle school and the associated ball fields and the right-of-way adjacent to the east side there. And then this is the multifamily zone that we were talking about, that Deputy Mayor Grous was asking about, and I can always come back to that. So what's the difference between a small cell and a wireless communication facility besides the definition, which says they are definitely different? It's the size of the antenna itself, three cubic feet, one foot by one. An example would be one foot all around, or it would be three feet by one feet. Or eight feet high is the current definition of anatomy of a wireless communication facility, one feet deep, one feet wide, one foot wide. To answer the other question I anticipate coming, Councilmember Deputy Mayor Grous was asking about the current wireless communication facility at 28th and 61st. This is from the application that we previously received to modify it within allowed code. So the current top of the roof is 31 feet high, and the existing antenna, according to the application that we received, is 38 feet and nine inches to the top of that antenna.
Tom?
So in your image there, is the one that's not highlighted in yellow, is that the current? And then the three yellow are proposed?
No, I just didn't highlight that one because it was narrow, but-
And so what, so it's one of them, just one is currently there?
No, there's, there, I, no, I believe, no, there are antennas there. I believe there's four antenna.
But they go up nine feet?
They go up, no, seven feet, nine inches.
And under the proposal, they go up, be allowed to go up to 20 feet?
Yes.
And cover 30% of the roof?
Yes.
That's small, the previous slide that-
Three by one by one.
Yeah.
But on this one, that is not the small facility. This is, would be one of the large antennas, be under the large antenna rule, and be allowed to go up an additional, go up 20 feet and cover 30% of the rooftop.
So on the right, that's the current definition of a wireless communication facilities, and they're under the existing code.
That's all, yeah.
I have questions regarding the small cell, and I guess as far as the installation of these small cells, I mean, it appears that they could go anywhere on the island. Is that correct?
For the most part, yes.
And-
Under the proposed amendment.
Under the proposed, yes. How high can they be installed?
35 feet, I believe.
35 feet. You know, I could, you know, in the explanation or the discussion about the ordinance, there was no citation to where this language came from and what the basis. And I guess I'm a little troubled by the fact that the applicant drafted the language, and I'm not sure, did we have anybody take a look to see if the language that was proposed was either required by statute or regulation, or is it permissive? And so I guess, first of all, if you can just respond to the information regarding the small cells, where did that come from?
That came from the applicant.
And again, is there anything in federal law or FCC that provides any guidance? I mean, do we have to have it?
There's nothing that I'm aware of that says you have to allow small cells throughout the island.
And why would we want to if we, I mean, I don't know what, what do they serve? What's the purpose of these things?
I'm going to let the applicant answer that question, if that's okay with you, Councilman.
And I'll just jump in, and go ahead and come on up and to respond to that question, but just as a process piece-
No, you can come up, let's-
They applied for the zone, this, this text amendment, so when we receive an application, we process it. So staff is taking no position on this other than we're just working it through the process. So I just want to be clear that this was not a staff proposal by any means.
Yeah, and I wanted to emphasize that too, because we're obligated by state law to take the application. We can make some clarifications and things, but then we're obligated to pass it along to the Planning Commission, and then they, of course, make a recommendation to you, which they've done here. So that's, that's why you're seeing it in this form, so it wasn't necessarily, it wasn't drafted by staff, isn't coming as a staff recommendation. We are performing our legal obligation, which is to take the application and move it through the Planning Commission and then to council.
So council, what I've suggested, George, do you have more slides? We've got to figure out how to get through this conversation in a sort of a logical fashion, and I see a lot of questions coming from the council. I'd like you to complete your presentation first, and then we'll try and break the questions out into some logical groups, so. Go ahead. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the only other thing, if council decides to approve this, a couple of possible clarifications to consider is that currently in the ordinance, section K, this is on page nine of the agenda bill, it says, and this is almost straight out of the FCC rule, it just says to approve prior to the passage of this certain federal law. I would say change that to a date certain, that when that law passed, so it's really clear, anyone looking at this, basically, it's to say, when do we measure the height, increasing by 10%? It is from February 22, 2012, which was a date that that specific federal law passed. Just clarifies it. It's a, it's a small one. We could come back if the council chooses to on second reading to clarify that one. And then this, the second one, this is on page seven, it says we would process the small cells in accordance with 1915-01-E, and there's a table in that section which says, this type of ordinance, or this type of application is processed this way. And it spells them all out, but because small cells are new, it's not in that table. So we would need to come back on second reading to just add that as a ministerial action, for example, which is something similar to a boundary line adjustment. It's just some code housekeeping that we caught.
That's it?
That's it, that's all I have. And then the applicants here-
Yeah, so if, as applicants, you'd like to come up and give us a presentation, you're welcome to. If you wanted to just break and tackle questions as those come up, we can do that too. What's your preference?
We'll make a very brief presentation start.
Okay, come on up then.
Would you want me to pull up that PowerPoint for you?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Good evening, and thank you for having us, and thank you for the, we've time to talk with you about this tonight. We appreciate the time, the opportunity to appear. Some of the questions you have may be addressed by us very briefly. If not, Mr. Mayor, please direct me, should I pause to answer questions?
How many slides you have?
I'll probably run through them quickly. I only have about 10 or so.
Why don't you go ahead and launch, and we'll try and keep the questions till the end.
Sure.
And if you could begin introducing yourself, that'd be great.
Of course. I'm Kirsten Larson of Bush Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of AT&amp;T, the applicant for the code text amendment. Tonight, we're here because we understand, we understand a few things about Mercer Island and working with your city staff over the past year to shape this language. First, we understand that there are areas on the island that have really poor wireless coverage, that have gaps in wireless coverage, that have no data signal, that have slow data loading, that have dropped calls, that have dead zones, as we call them. AT&amp;T is always striving to provide the best and most capable wireless network, so how do we address that? Well, we also understand that ourselves, our families, our emergency services, our businesses are increasingly reliant on wireless technology. Here, as you can see, data usage on AT&amp;T's network alone has increased more than 50,000% in the past six years. That is just mega growth in data. How do we build a network that responds to your constituents and their need for data on their smartphones, on their tablets, on their wireless devices to keep in touch with their families, their businesses, and emergency services? Also, we're seeing a great, a great trend both nationwide and here in Washington State. You can see this statistic shows nationally, 43% of homes are wireless only. They don't have a landline at all. As you can see, an additional 32% have a landline, but they hardly use it. In Washington, the statistic is similar. We're looking at about 56.8% of homes across Washington State are wireless only at this So as we said, it's essential that we provide upgraded and expanded networks to keep responding to this demand. And briefly, AT&amp;T has invested nearly $1.85 billion in Washington State alone, centered on the Puget Sound region, to aid our businesses, our products, our services, and our family. Just briefly, improve networks, minimize dropped calls, increase network speed, deliver better capacity and coverage, and of course, deliver that at an LTE level, which is the fastest speed within the wireless technology network, and you can see that has evolved just over the brief time of 2005 to 2014. So one of the areas that is a challenge here for Mercer Island in providing a wireless signal is topography. There are very steep slopes, there are also very steep drop-offs to the water, there's quite a bit of shoreline, of course, being an island, and also very tall, beautiful trees throughout the island. Both of these things interfere with providing a clear, strong signal to all areas of the Also, very briefly, other things affect signal strength, such as- Also, very briefly, other things affect signal strength, such as traffic on the network and demand on the network at any given time. So, as I mentioned, we're committed to, and have worked with city staff over the past year, to develop the very least intrusive option for the city to respond to these challenges and propose here a very small set of changes that would work within the structure of your existing code to address the challenges. They're very targeted revisions. One of them, as George mentioned, is to authorize small cell as just another tool in the toolbox within your existing code structure for added coverage and improved capacity. This is just authorizing small cell as a tool, it does not permit it outright, small cell is still subject to review by the city and subject to compliance with the city's performance standards within its existing code as proposed. Second, very targeted, authorize a wireless communication facility within a small portion of the right-of-way, adjacent to island or middle school, and the Mercer Play Fields, down in the very south portion of the island, to deal with existing coverage and capacity problems down there. And finally, a very brief update to the code to provide for modifications to existing wireless facilities within the city. These are sites that have already been built, have existed for years, in compliance with and consistent with recent changes to federal law, the FCC rules that have been adopted to provide for modifications to existing facilities, as long as those modifications are not a substantial change to the dimensions of the existing facility. Briefly, there were some questions about small cells, we think perhaps, I'll take any more questions that you may have, but briefly, here's some information about them. Small cells are designed to be attached to utility poles, light poles or buildings. They're attached to typically an existing utility pole, as you can see here, typically mounted at 20 to 30 feet, I believe the code allows for up to 35, to deal with separation issues. You see that we have wires on an existing utility pole to provide for safety separation required by building codes, and also to provide for minimizing interference, that, that height limit is provided within the code. As you can see, I'll just use the pointer here, the small cell antennas here, and the equipment here. Actual configurations may differ here, of course, we're looking at a small cell facility that is supported by a brief arm from the pole. Key things about small cell, they're for very small areas, they're not a substitute for macro sites, but they're designed to fix coverage problems in very, very small areas, they're limited by, let's say, topography or capacity, we're talking maybe a two, three block radius at most. They also rely on a network, they function on kind of a web or mat, so that one small cell facility permitted here, if the other small cell facilities that support it are not permitted, that network would not function. So, here, it is a very targeted solution, it is just another tool in the toolbox that may be appropriate for the island, but of course, that would be based on city review, on city performance standards, and also on what is the best thing for the neighborhood.
What is the city review? I'm curious, the performance standards, and this seems to be the only thing that applies, "Small cell, small cell facilities shall be designed to be as visually unobtrusive as possible while accommodating necessary equipment and advances in technology. Small cell facilities may be placed above ground and located in their power utilities, including on existing replacement utility poles or on existing replacement light poles." Are there any other performance standards in those two sentences I just read to you?
Could you provide me with a citation, please?
It's on page seven, it's paragraph F3, under performance standards. And I read that together with E1, on page six, which seems to say that the small cell permission is basically notwithstanding everything else we've got in our code, except for these performance standards, which are in F3 that I just read you, which basically say it has to be unobtrusive, but still has to accommodate the unnecessary equipment and advances in technology. I just, I mean, I don't, if, if there's more than that, that's great, but if you're going to sit here and tell us that there are all this great city review and city standards that are going to apply, then please, I don't understand what that great city review is going to be about.
Sure, I understand. Those are the performance standards that are proposed in code and that exist in code, not only for small cell, but for other facilities as well.
So, that's the city review you're referring to?
Hi, my name's Ken, I'm at Bush Law Firm on behalf of the AT&amp;T. I'll point you to two other sections. First would be definitions of small cells, so there are definitions that talk about the size of the antennas, the size limitations related to the equipment.
The three cubic feet and then the 17 feet, 17 feet for the, for the equipment cabinet, which was not in the pictures.
That was, that's the box that's underneath the, underneath the lines there.
Yeah, it's the box at the, on the ground.
Right here.
That's a 17 foot?
That 17 cubic feet is the limit, that's the, that's the box that, and it, just so you know, that three cubic feet and 17 cubic feet is actually an industry-wide, an industry accepted definition of small cell, that was in the recent SDC rule that came out, so it's not an AT&amp;T-specific standard.
Okay, but that's, but, because, what was referred to maybe by George, you talked about the three cubic feet, that was, which sounds very small, but, I mean, in George's presentation, I don't believe it covered the 17 feet, and I didn't realize that yours covered the 17 feet as well.
In terms of the size of the equipment box?
Well, just in terms of, okay, why don't you keep going on?
Yeah, there's going to, there's going to, obviously going to be a deep dive here, but let's complete the presentation first, and then come, and then just begin to wade through the whole.
The only thing I also wanted to add to that is that the proposal in front of you is actually different than what was originally proposed. There was a change at the planning commission that would not allow the height of the pole to which the antennas are attached, or the small cell facility is attached, to be increased in height. So, we'd be dealing with existing utility poles, existing, existing light poles that may have to be replaced for structural reasons, which is a decision of actually the pole owner, typically in this case, it'd be Puget Sound Energy, but it would not be able to increase in height. That's another constraint, I wanted to make sure that was mentioned.
Was that specified?
It was actually, it's, the, the height limitation was, was actually taken out, so it, right now...
Was it specified?
Isn't it still on page one, page nine, 1A? Isn't it still, page nine, 1A? Isn't it still there?
Should we get all of the, including the small cell things? No, it's that 1E section.
Page seven, top of page seven, it's number three, the maximum height of small cell facilities shall be limited no more than 35 feet above existing grade?
But it also says that the placement of a small facility on an existing or replacement utility pole, that was a language that was adopted by the planning commission with the intent of not having the heights increase in height.
I'm sorry, so where, what paragraph are you reading from?
That was a, a, I'm sorry, where were we? Right there. I don't know where you went back to, my apologies. Okay, I'm sorry, it is section E? E2.
Top of page seven.
There's, there's section two and section three. Section three was the one that, that George had mentioned, that shall be limited to no more than 35 above existing grade, but then above and two, that was the section that the planning commission modified to not allow additional height before the language said that additional 10 feet could be allowed on top of an existing pole, and that was removed.
Sorry, on, on page nine, exhibit number 1A, it seems to be still there, and except for, it says towers instead of poles, so towers are still allowed, but poles are not? Is that the, towers are still allowed to go up by?
So, yeah, that, that... That's a lot of...
That relates to the new federal laws, it relates to what constitutes a substantial change to an existing facility.
But I'm going to, goes to pause here, because we're all going to have to get smart enough to follow this, and right now, at least I'm not following it, because I'm still waiting for the rest of the presentation, so let's get through that. I've asked Noel to start developing a list of the topic areas we've got here, clearly the small cells are one, the multifamily area is another, but he'll, he'll keep tabs on that, and if you've got something else that's, you know, top of mind for you now, just make a note of it, and let's make sure we, we do tackle it when we get through the presentation, okay? So, onward with that, if we could.
That is actually all.
Good timing.
All right, so you are, you're complete on that then, on the presentation?
I am, yes, just briefly to summarize, the proposed code amendments deal with small cells, just another tool in the toolbox, they deal with recent changes to federal law, and they deal with authorizing a facility at the corner that we spoke of in the northwestern part of the island, and also a facility within the right-of-way, near the Mercer Play Fields, South Mercer Play Fields.
Okay.
Can we just finish up that, on that corner in the northwest part of the island, why you're asking for such a dramatic expansion of what you've already got there?
Do you want to take that?
I, I, just thinking back to the conversations we had with city staff, I believe there was concern mentioned about, we, there's one non-conforming facility there today, the question was whether or not there would be opportunity for other carriers to potentially want, that may want to locate in that corner, and if just by authorizing that one location, if that would preclude that. So, I think that's what led to the discussion of, of actually increasing it to that multifamily zone. If, if the council felt that they wanted it more limited to that corner, I don't think that we would necessarily have any objection to that, it's just that I think the concern was about, about having the opportunity for other carriers to open facilities.
Could we perhaps go back to the map of the island? I, and the reason I'm asking is because I am curious to understand what else is in that area.
Blocks from avoiding...
That's a historic...
I'm understanding, I'm curious from a perspective of wireless facilities, what else is in that area?
I can zoom in a little bit if that'll help you.
I guess, I...
And we can pull up an aerial photo too, if that's...
No, that's okay, I mean, I know the, I just wanted to see what the surrounding area was, and, and so I guess I'm, I'm just curious what...
Let me ask, Mr. Mayor, I suggest something, you know, there needs to be a problem, some, an area where I'm uncomfortable with is giving you additional locations if there's not a problem, and Ms. Larson referred to it, the reason for doing this is to improve service in dead spot. So, what I'm not seeing is a need for that additional red. I'm not seeing a map of dead spots on the island, and certainly from a council member's perspective, we want, we understand the importance of data and wireless, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm not seeing the dead spaces on the island, which I know they exist, to justify any expansion of potentially view-blocking antennas.
So, maybe if I can ask a, so basically you're saying, you know, give us some map or overview of where your performance, where the, the areas in which you have performance-related issues, and how do these relate to those less functional areas? Do you, do you have a map that shows performance of what, what areas of the island you're particularly trying to address? And then we can then hopefully visually tie these two new sites to those particular areas?
I'm sorry, we, we don't, we don't have a map with us tonight, it wasn't something, as you can see, there's only, there's really only one other location that's being proposed for an additional macro facility, and that's the south end of the island in the red at the bottom of the map. You know, generally speaking, the problems we have with providing coverage on the island is driven by exactly what you see, we have a spine of the city where we have the antennas, where antennas are allowed to locate, but the topography drops off, and you're not able to provide coverage as you go into residential areas, as you get closer to the shoreline. That's generally the problem, and, and if we were to show you a map, that's what you'd see, you'd see pretty good coverage, again, adjacent to the blue areas that, that are there, but certainly, there are large portions of the island, certainly where topography drops off, certainly where there's a density, where that's where we're having a significant amount of problems. Again, for macro facilities, again, facilities that are probably what you're used to seeing, you know, is only being proposed really in one new location, and that's in the south part of the island, the only discussion, of course, in the northwest part of the island is the ability to modify an existing facility that's already there. And then the rest of the island, of course, we're proposing an option of being able to use small cells, which is, we believe, the least intrusive way to provide a mechanism to, to fill in these coverage gaps and capacity gaps that exist in other parts of the island, that it cannot be covered by the, the pure physics of being able to provide service from such limited locations that, that we're allowed to provide today. But, again, I apologize, we don't have a map, honestly, to be able to do that tonight, anyway.
Let me ask one, and then come back to you. So, in the northwest part of the island, the red dot there, is that an AT&amp;T facility at this time, or is that someone else's facility? You're out for the greater good in the sense of, you've already got one, but you think someone else might want to have one there?
It, it is an existing AT&amp;T facility, it's the only one there, and because it's the only, the only part of that island where you can actually, you know, where we actually have a site, it has a huge amount of traffic that's, that goes through it. It's very much overstressed in terms of its location, so the ability to be able to modify it, and be able to provide more robust coverage, no, is maximize the sites that you have, so you don't have to build new ones, is, is always the first philosophy that we have, and so certainly that's it. The idea of being able to provide those additional corners, I believe that that was something that came up from our, after reviewing the discussion with staff. If, if council wanted it more limited, you know, I, I don't think we would necessarily have an objection with that.
Okay. So, I'm trying to concentrate on multifamily for the moment, I mean, your question was about that also, or were you headed in a different direction?
It was more related to the earlier question, but I'm willing to hold my question if you want.
Okay, but, but, Dan, you teed this up as, let's start here, and I'm, I'm trying to follow that lead for the moment, so we're not bouncing all over the place on this. You've expressed a concern about the height going up substantially from what it was, and Mike has alluded to that, does that present a, a view problem if it's both taller and covering a substantial portion of the roof area? Do we have any kind of staff assessment whether that's a big deal or not? Okay?
I mean, I, I mean, the real question, I think, is, what you've got is an existing non-conforming use, and so, we are doing something we would almost never do for any other situation, and turn it into a conforming use. And we're not only just turning it into a conforming use, we're also actually permitting an expanded use than, than what has existed in the past, so we're, we're taking, and I'm not saying it was done illegally, from what staff is saying, apparently it was done before we started regulating things, but, but it is a non-conforming use, and under our zoning code right now, if, if AT&amp;T wanted to modify that, they would be prohibited from doing so.
That's, that's not correct.
I believe if you, you cannot make a non-conforming use into, into a greater non-conforming use.
It is pursuant to the new federal code location law, section 6409, which is also reflecting the code, the site can be modified, regardless of its non-conforming status.
Well, okay, I'm, I'm not going to argue with you, because you obviously know more about that than I do, but it, clearly, the, the modification you're proposing is far in excess of the, the relatively limited modification that's in this new ordinance that's permitted as a matter of law. I mean, you're asking for 20 feet height, from going from eight feet to 20 feet height, going, going from basically, looks like three standalone small towers going up to something that covers 30 percent of the rooftop. That's, that's what the code, that's what your statute provides for, your proposal provides for. Is that, I mean, and I don't believe that, that's far in excess of what federal law would authorize you to do.
Well, I mean, the one thing I would probably clarify with that is that you'll see the existing site, part of the reason why it's non-conforming is it's not screened. You know, that, because that, that square footage, and at least the percentage of the rooftop you're talking about, if it were screened, it would obviously take up a larger portion, it would, obviously, the site would look better, you know, would have, you wouldn't be able to see the antennas, but it would also take up a larger portion of the roof to do that, so that's part of the reason for that, related to the area of the, of the site. Related to height, it really depends on the proximity of the antennas to the edge of the roof. You know, the antennas operate as a line-of-sight type of technology, so if you have antennas that are co-located in the center of the roof, but they're very, very low, they can't actually see over the edge of the roof to reach the coverage objective it's trying to meet, so that's the reason for the, for the standards that have been proposed.
And that may very well be the case. I mean, I think the issue the council has to deal with, let's back up, I mean, I, I'm going to date myself here, but I was actually in the planning commission when we did the original ordinance for, for wireless facilities, so I, I remember this a little bit. And, and what the, what the philosophy was back in those days was, we would provide certain specific locations on the island, such as on the spine and island crestways, such as on... such as on ball fields, and, and that's what we would allow. And, because we wanted to keep these things out of residential neighborhoods to the maximum extent possible. And, because that's what the citizenry was telling us at that time. And I, I can't say what they would say to us now if we actually engage, but most people have a visceral reaction to having a cell tower in their backyard. That's just the reality we deal with, whether it's, whether it's rational or not, I'm not going to get into. But that, people generally wanted to not have in the residential areas, so we put it in very specific places, tried to put it in ball fields, tried to put it along Island Crest, like I said, and tried to, in the north end. So the challenge, I think, for the council is, is do we continue that philosophy? And do we say, for example, okay, we recognize we've got a problem, so we're going to authorize along West Mercer, or along East Mercer, but we stick along the major, the Mercers, and we don't, we don't go into the neighborhoods? And, and that's a philosophical discussion I think we need to have as a council. If, if we accept your argument, and I'm, again, I, I happen to have great cellphone coverage, and I have AT&amp;T, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
But, but, you know, I, I, I'm sure there are people on the island who can't say that. And so, so presumably we have a problem, and as your colleague said, you know, that the data uses is just continuing to get, to get more, but I mean, we as a, we philosophically as a council have to decide whether what we want to do is just maintain the philosophy we've had all along, and that is try to keep cell towers within a relatively, relatively narrow band in order to keep it out of the residential areas.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I think it is, it is a policy question in the sense that, you know, back when the original ordinance was approved, and, you know, the coverage in residential areas was not a primary consideration of the code. It's very clear that it was meant for the main thoroughfares and downtown, certainly the freeway, you can see that reflected in the map. You know, with data growth and with people giving up their home phones and going wireless only, it does present a profound policy shift in the sense that people require these types of services, they're relying on them more and more where they live. You know, how do you provide that type of service to where they are in the least intrusive means possible? And I think that what we've presented is an attempt to respond to that, but I do agree with you, it is certainly a, a policy question for the council to consider.
Jane, you had your hand up, and then I'm going to come back to myself.
Oh, well, I'm, I'm an AT&amp;T customer, and I'm in a dead spot, so. I guess what I'd like to see is a, a more detailed map of exactly where we have monopoles, where we have co-located facilities, exactly where, and I realize most of the facilities now are on, on the spine or on the north end of the island. But I, I would need to know exactly where those are, and also how, what's the relationship between the smaller web you mentioned of the smaller cells versus the, the larger facility? Is 10 of the smaller ones can equal a large one, or is it all a function of placement and location?
I think it's definitely, I'm sorry.
Some, anyway, help me understand that.
Yeah, I think it's definitely a, a function of the latter. I can't give you a complete multiplier of what one macro site equals, because it depends on the area. Again, these are very small coverage areas, and they provide a limited geographic area that they do cover. And so, you know, how much a macro site comparable would be able to provide would depend, again, how tall it is, you know, what, you know, topography, trees, and, you know, things like that. Generally speaking, looking at the map here, and again, I, I don't think we have one that, but I, perhaps I can ask staff, staff to help out with this, but there are a couple of monopoles along the I-90 corridor, obviously, because of site, of course, sites that are at the, obviously, the west end of the tunnel, obviously shooting across over to Seattle. Mostly along Island Crest Way, most of them are utility pole facilities. They're basically the eight-foot-tall antennas that are flush-mounted to the, to the side of the utility poles, and there are several, one of that entire spine. I believe there's one monopole, but I believe all the antennas are also flush-mounted to that as well. And I believe there's also some sites down at the fire station. But, you know, generally speaking, most of the ones around the spine are going to be your utility pole sites, which is, in one respect, it's similar to a small cell that we'd be attaching small cell facilities to an existing utility pole, but again, the antennas themselves are much smaller, and you'd have much fewer of them. So for example, you know, on a, a typical AT&amp;T facility, Long Island Crest Way might have six eight-foot-tall antennas, flush-mounted to an existing utility pole, whereas a, a small cell facility that's attached to a pole somewhere else, at least what we're proposing, would be two of the antennas that are less than three cubic feet, again, flush-mounted to the pole, and working in the configuration that Puget Sound Energy would allow us. Does that help? Yeah?
So I'm going to go, and then I'll go to Tana and Debbie. You've painted a pretty clear picture, I think, of the difference between these large antennas and these small antennas, but help me understand, if, if you look at what gets installed nowadays in an area like this, is it, is the shift on from the large old antennas to small, more distributed small antennas? I mean, I guess that's kind of the way a lot of things end up moving over time, and I'm curious whether that is a correct, well, assessment of what, what you typically would be doing in a situation like this.
Yeah, it's a great question. In fact, I mean, if you read all the studies that are out there, and if you guys, you know, have, you know, looking at the research, they're anticipating certainly a lot of small cells to, to help fill some of the data crunch, because again, there's a carrying capacity of the number of users, the amount of data an individual site can, can carry, and so being able to have, you know, smaller facilities and more of them be able to soak up some of that demand certainly makes a difference. It's not going to replace, I don't think, some of the, the macro sites we see. And so all the ones that, and again, if you look at, again, looking at the map, we're only proposing, you know, one more location to build a macro facility. That's it, just one more location. We're not proposing a lot more portions of the island to put up towers, or to put, you know, larger facilities that have, that carry the large antennas. Again, we're only talking one, but certainly you can see the option that we're looking for is the ability to deploy this kind of low, low-impact type of technology, which is small cell, which is the lowest-impact type of facility that we currently technologically have available to us. And it doesn't, unfortunately, it would not be appropriate in some of these high-traffic areas where the, where the macro sites are still needed to provide, again, that, that large data and large capacity for those, but it is certainly, for some of these other areas of the island that might have dead spots, it could be a very, you know, elegant way of, of reaching and filling those needs without having to build such a large facility to do it.
But for instance, could the multifamily, if the multifamily location, the northwest side of the island, if we said, you know, we'd rather not offend those neighbors by expanding the possibility of blocked views there, could you sprinkle a handful of, of these small facilities, the small antennas around that same area and solve the problem in that fashion?
Yeah, I, I don't think so, not in that particular location. That's one of, one of our highest-traffic sites on the entire island, and, and so, you know, the, that's, you know, just generally speaking, that, that site, I mean, the small, the small cells might be able to cover some of the residential areas, it might be able to cover things like that, but, you know, certainly the amount of traffic that that part of the portion of the island receives, a combination of, of just the neighborhood around it, as well as partially I-90 and other things, there's a lot of traffic that's required of that site, and that's why it's been modified, you know, three times in the last two years. It's had to be in order to try to keep up with demand.
Okay.
Just, just answer, just...
Okay, but then...
But, I mean, the other alternative, instead of doing that, would be to build a taller tower on West Mercer instead of putting it into the neighborhood. I mean, that's, that's what I was trying to drive it before, that, that's a philosophical difference. Do you keep it on the spines, or do you go in, do you, we have three spines on Mercer Island. We got West Mercer, East Mercer, and Island Crest Way. So, I mean, and versus going into the small streets of the neighborhood like 61st and 28th, where you've got this now.
That's about a half a block away from West Mercer, so it's not...
Well, it's three blocks away, but it's, yeah, it is. But the, the, so, I mean, that's, that would be your option instead of going to, you've got, what you were talking about is putting small cell facilities all around that area, but the other option is putting up a 65-foot pole on West Mercer.
No, no towers, or as you can see, there's no permitted location around there aside from the I-90 corridor, which is, which already has sites on it.
No, I know there's one now.
He's suggesting...
Changing policy.
Changing that policy, so that West Mercer becomes a...
Well, I mean, the one thing I would mention is that existing site isn't, isn't going to go away, and it, it provides obviously a very critical function, not only to the neighborhood, but certainly to the network of Mercer Island, and it's allowed to be modified, you know, as it currently sits. The challenge is, is, you know, whether or not it really can provide the type of capacity it needs to, and whether or not that can be done in a way, if it can be screened, you know, things like that, that maybe aren't currently available today.
Tana and Debbie, I'm not sure who was up next, so, and then we'll go to Benson after the two of you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Just on the screening, real quick, if you can, just give us a little bit more screening, like, is it tree screening, is it, you know, natural greens, is it, is it metal mesh? If you could just tell us a little bit more about the screening, and then either, in that same section around the multifamily, there's also a kind of a, a last sentence talking about that equipment can be at the ground level, and it doesn't seem to have any restrictions or, or size barriers or modifications or guidelines, and so I'm just wondering if that's 20 feet and 30% of the roof coverage also at ground level, and how that is determined? So those two questions.
Yeah, there are ground screening requirements in the code that we'd have to meet. Obviously, there's equipment there currently, so the antennas currently as it sits, there's antennas on an existing multifamily building, and the, and the equipment is actually under the, is under the multifamily building next door, so the underbuilding parking area. In that area, that's where the equipment currently sits, as an example. Then it has to be, equipment always has to be screened, of course, and, you know, I don't know the exact requirements off of hand, perhaps staff can, can do that. Generally, screening for antennas on a rooftop, they use what's called FRP, fiber glass reinforced plastic. It's basically a, an RF transparent, in other words, radio frequency transmit signals can get through it. So instead of shooting through wood, or, you know, metal, or something of that nature, it can go through, again, this type of material, and you can make, get it to make it look architecturally compatible with the building that you're going on. So it's been fashioned to look like brick, it's been fashioned to look like, you know, stucco, it's been fashioned to look like all sorts of things in order to be able to screen it. You see them all the time, well, maybe you don't see them, that's the point, on things like, you know, church steeples and things like that, you'll notice that, you know, sometimes sections can be taken out, replaced with FRP. It still looks like the building itself, but there are actually antennas now hidden behind it, and they can actually see through the signals. I think that was two of your questions. Was there another one? I'm sorry, was there?
Okay. Debbie? Did you want to go?
I was going to shift more to the, to the broader question of the, the small cells and distribution intended coverage of the island. Are you ready to go there, or do you want to stay in the multifamily area?
Well, I went there a bit because I felt like it fed back into this question of the multifamily. If you, if it...
If I can make that correlation?
If it informs that, that discussion, yes, otherwise, let's save it.
Well, I think, I think mine would probably be up one or two levels from there, and that is, I go back to the basic principle that was articulated in terms of why the, the revisions to the code, and that is to improve dead spots, weak areas, dropped calls, et cetera. So overall performance enhancement is your objective, and yet, in this particular context, really what we're just talking about is inhaling one site and adding another. So I have to presume if the performance issues are, as you say, revolve me around the perimeter of the island, I'm being a little loose with my interpretation, but that's more or less what I derived from the, the earlier presentation, what we're saying is the vast majority of performance issues are not going to be addressed by these two proposed additional locations. But what you're essentially then, I think, saying is that the performance enhancement is going to come from the additional tool in the toolkit, which is the small cell. So this goes back to the earlier question, and that is, when you look at the overall objective being to improve performance, what would be, what would the island look like in terms of the addition of these small cell boxes? How many? Where would you put them? And then from the city staff perspective, what is the actual approval process that we would go through, I assume, for each and every site, or is there some sort of blanket that would go forward? Because I think these two are important, but I think that ultimately those aren't the ones that are addressing what I understand is the critical objective here.
Do you want to take one? I would say, generally speaking, I, I think certainly our goal is to improve coverage and capacity throughout the island, but small cells isn't the only way of doing that. Maximizing our existing sites, like this existing site in the multifamily zone in the northwest part of, in the northwest part of the island, as well as the code changes that deal with the new federal laws relates to co-locations and upgrades, those are also critical to making sure that our existing sites can be upgraded to provide the maximum amount of capacity and reduce the need for additional facilities. That's certainly something that should be considered. Again, we believe that we, that one additional macro facility is needed, and we tried to come up with a proposal that would have the least number of that, knowing that, you know, the concerns that might be there. There's lots of different ways, I believe, getting back to Tana's question on that, there's all sorts of ways that new facilities can be screened, whether they're attached to utility poles, we can make them look like trees, you know, we, the technology's gotten a lot better, that you can make them look, they're called monopines. I'm sure you've seen mono palms in California, but specifically northwest, we have very nice pine and firs, and, and that we can make them look like, and especially if they're surrounded by other trees, certainly that they can. But again, we're only proposing to be able to upgrade existing sites, that's certainly one feature, proposing, again, one new location for being able to provide a new macro facility, and then, again, the third lead, that we're proposing to hit dead spots that are not covered by those first two by proposing, again, small cells. If I can lay out the context, the, all three of those are meant to get, to address the capacity and coverage issues that we have.
Yeah, no, I got that part of it. What I'm trying to get at is, you referred to the small cells as an additional tool in the toolkit, which was also referencing approval of some form, shape, size by the city. So assuming that that tool goes into your toolkit, and AT&amp;T can move forward quickly in terms of creating whatever performance metrics and SLAs that you want, what would that look like? How many small cell additions are you looking at? Where are you looking at putting them? And then the subsequent question to the staff is, what is the approval process that would go through? Because if, if this is just something that you want for someday in the future, that's one thing, but if ultimately what you're saying is, we anticipate putting these small cell boxes, you know, in 50 additional locations on the island, then I think it's also important for us to understand, you know, at what point the city is involved in the approval process as well as neighborhood input. So really, my question is more specifically around the small cell, and what it is you're anticipating over what timeframes.
Do you want, do you want to address the approval process first, and then...
I'm happy to do the approval process, if that's okay. So the approval process is essentially up in the air right now. So because of page seven, number two at the very top, it says, "The approval process shall be per 1915010E." That's what we like to affectionately call the Table of Powers, which basically says, how do you process each type of these permits? Small cells, which is new, isn't in the Table of Powers, and so we need to come back at second reading and propose it. So what staff is suggesting, and, you know, we're definitely open for it, would be a ministerial action. So what does that mean in layman's terms? That means that the code official staff would approve it after reviewing it to make sure it's, meets these criteria. The big difference with that versus the next step up, the ministerial action, is there would not be a public notice process, there wouldn't be the 300-foot mailing, there would be the notice of decision in the bulletin, but that's about it. So if stat, if council prefers, we could come back and propose to change 1915010 to add small cells either as a ministerial, no public notice, or as an administrative process, a ministerial process, to include the public notice process.
But the only standard is what's a little farther down that page in F3, right? So whether you, what, no matter how you do it, your criteria for deciding whether or not to approve it is what's in F3, assuming they meet the size requirements. Right? So I mean, it's...
So there's no power to, I mean...
Yeah, if they meet this, of course, we have to approve that, exactly.
I think, I think what the corollary, Debbie's question was, they don't have to demonstrate to you there's actually a need for this, they just have to say that it has to be unobtrusive, and it has to be of a certain size, and if they say that, it may turn out there's no need at all, but they just want to put it there for the heck of it, and it doesn't make sense, but...
Yes, yes.
So what is the, I mean, I know AT&amp;T has the...
Mike, to the extent, I, I just wanted to keep going in order here. So Debbie's question's still on the table, I think, and we have a new person welcome to, I guess, speak to that, and then we're going to go to Benson after that, so...
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Carol Tagayan, I'm with AT&amp;T External Affairs out of the Redmond office, and I wanted to address your question about where we would put them, how many we would put, and what are our plans for small cell for Mercer Island. So to date, according to your code, small cell isn't allowed, so we haven't done extensive work around what we would propose, exactly how it would look. But we've had some general discussions about potentially... But we've had some general discussions about potentially two small cell rings, you know, networks, one sort of on the north end and one sort of on the south end of the island, and it would require us to, you know, do some sidewalks, looking around, deciding where they would go, and figuring out how they would all work together. They have to be, small cells, they are in a network, so they have to be close enough to each other to, you know, to connect, and they also are supported by the, you know, closest macro site, they don't work alone, they actually support an existing macro site, so we would base it on that and decide where it would, so it's not determined yet, but that's sort of the general thoughts that we had about how it would be best served here on Mercer Island.
Can you just give an approximate estimate for those, the north ring and the south ring, I mean, how many of these small cells would be looking at, is this, what kind of radius are we actually covering? A lot of early discussion.
Well, each small cell itself serves about, you know, up to, say, 600 feet, if you're blocked, approximately, right? So it could vary depending on everything, like topography and trees and things like that. We, generally, they could be maybe 20 sites in one ring, and, you know, you can multiply out how far that would serve.
Thank you. If I could just add one note to that, it, they can only be proposed in areas of the island that has above-ground utility poles or light poles to be able to support them. There are a few spots, you know, that, they don't exist, and they wouldn't be allowed, is all I'm saying, you know, you're not allowed to build a new pole.
Okay. To Benson.
Yeah, this is just a quick follow-up to this whole discussion about these small cells and what they might look like and where they may be, and just the number, I, obviously, we're just talking, you're AT&amp;T, I apologize, I don't have you guys, I have another carrier, but I suspect that once this happens, there'll be other carriers coming on that will want to take advantage of these code changes, and so, do we have a sense of what that might look like? And I guess, I'm concerned a little bit about the view issue, it's, obviously, you know, these small cells, they are small, and obviously, you tend to, you want to make them obtrusive, but I could see them multiplying quite a bit on the island, so is that something that the staff has looked into at all, or is there any kind of sense how this is going to actually look on the island?
So we did, at the Planning Commission, invite other carriers to come to comment on this, and I believe, as, I'm sorry, I was out at the second Planning Commission meeting, I had lost my voice, I wasn't very effective, so Scott was kind enough to cover for me, and I believe there was one carrier that came, testified, and supported it.
That's correct.
But I did send out emails to other carriers' representatives that I was aware of, and said, "Hey, this is coming, would love to get your guys' feedback on this."
So we have to assume that if it is changed, they will be coming onto the island and, you know, perhaps taking advantage of the changes then?
That's my assumption, based on the feedback that I receive and the kind of applications that I get.
Okay. Can I ask, before I forget, there's just another thing that, and George is actually probably addressed to you, you know, in the changes here, there's references that these will be exempt from land use, the exact, it appears at a couple of places that there's going to be exempt from land use review, is that correct? And then, at the very end, what was puzzling was at the end of the Planning Commission discussion, it says that these things may be potentially subject to environmental and land use review, so I wasn't quite sure what the intent was, and why they are exempt from land use review at this point.
Okay, so on the first question, exempt from land use review, small cell facilities under the existing code, or the proposed code, I'm sorry, would not be exempt because of that section I keep referring back to, says you've got to, you got to, you know, the review process would be ministerial, administrative, you know, to be determined. So no, there would be a permit to issue on this. On your second question, would be exempt from SEPA, I think is essentially what you're asking, so under, I'm, sorry, I'm going to throw out a whack here, under, under State Environmental Policy Act, it talks about exemptions, it's a WAC 19711, number 25, it exempts most wireless communication facilities.
If I can add, it would exempt small cell facilities because they are attached to an existing structure and they don't add more than 20 feet in height, which is the threshold under the, under the SEPA law.
Okay. Counsel, what I'm going to suggest, Mike, I have his hand up, and I'm going to go to Mike, but I'm going to suggest after that, we take a 10-minute break, and that'll give us a chance, it's been two hours, and that's longer than we typically go, it'll give us a chance to sort of compare notes with staff offline and try and figure out how we're going to try and land this for tonight, because it's clear we're nowhere near wrapping this up, and I'd like to give everybody a chance to stretch their legs, too. So, to you, Mike, and then we're going to take a break. Dan, you got, you want to change, change direction on that?
I'm just seeing Manny's been sitting back there because of the next agenda item, I'm wondering if there's any chance we can just-
No, it's not break continuity here. Although, sorry, Manny.
And, and, we're not asking Manny to speak, right? So Manny, you don't need to be here, just, you may, but you don't need to be. So, Mike, your question, and then we're going to break.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm kind of ready to get to the next step of these questions.
You want to just hold until after?
Yeah, absolutely, in circles.
We're going to, we'll pause until 9:16, so we are in recess. Meeting will return to order. All right, we've had a break, we've talked a bit, trying to figure out how to land this, the suggestion that's come up is that what we do is collect questions tonight rather than try and get all the questions answered, we simply have too many questions, we think, to try and get through them in depth this evening. It's clear that this is not going to be a two-reading exercise we're going to go through, it's likely to be a three-reading exercise, if all goes well. And what's been suggested is, on page one of the agenda bill, are four topics, let's go to each of those topics in turn and get a collection of council members' questions for staff to then work through, if, and, I mean, of course, if, if any of these are easy, we can, we'll try and land it right now, but otherwise, it's, it's let's collect the questions and have staff bring back answers. So the first is the question of the wireless communication facilities at Island or Middle School and South Mercer Playfields, council question specifically with respect to that. No questions with respect to that, that one's easy. Are we prepared to then say we're okay with that and have staff sort of leave that one intact for the moment?
Well, I would, I would ask exactly where and exactly what height that, that facility would be, and could it be camouflaged in a particularly tasteful way, and its exact location and height?
Thank you, Pally. On page six, it talks about, excuse me, I'm flipping pages here, the standards there.
Oh, 110, yeah, yeah, okay, I got you.
So, but it's still kind of, you know, the critical issue to me on the dimensions and locations of these towers and the small units has to be, and it will be, views, whether it restricts views, and nowhere in this regulation or in the presentation do I see a appreciation or a concern about views, and I can guarantee you, the citizens out there, they have no, they don't know what's going on with this right here, even though, as documented in the whereas, there were many public outreaches and the proper documentation, proper notification, but I guarantee you, they didn't, they haven't paid attention to it, that's our job. So, my concern is, where, with these new proposed sites and stuff, how does it change the view? So my concern is where with these new proposed sites and stuff, how does it change the views? I mean, the one gentleman there caveated the small units would always stay beneath the poles, although I'm still unclear whether that was documented. And citizens, if we, if you don't restrict additional view, then I think they'll be relatively understanding or accommodating. But as soon as you infringe upon more of their view, and that's my question, where I'm going with this, is work for the staff in presenting us some way on where these, for instance, there are one, two, three, four, four different standards of limiting antennas projecting over structures. Somewhere in this regulation, it says up to 20 feet, another place up to 15 feet, another place up to 10 feet, another place in this regulation restricting to two feet. Well, it really doesn't matter whether it's 20, 15, 10, or two, if it's not restricting any views. But as soon as you restrict a view, even if it's only two feet, then you have an issue. And that's how I'd like the staff, and of course, it's up to the council to employ that task of the staff coming forward, is with these changes, whose view do we restrict?
So...
Or what views are we restricting?
So what I've heard, though, so far is a request for clarity around the question of where they go and what the impact on views would be and what the degree of visibility of them is.
That's what you heard.
And I've heard that from both you and Jane at this point, right?
This one is sort of, I think, simple, because if you look at E on page six, up at the top of page six, this is the, this is a new area, South Mercer Playfields and Islander Middle School. And it's easy if you just do little I and two I's. You do have to include a height limit, there's no height limit for some reason in this paragraph. Every one of the other paragraphs there, there's a height limit. So it's either presuming it's going to be 60 feet or 110 feet. She's, you've got to come up with a height limit there somewhere. But if you just went with little I and little two I, which is what we do back on Island Crest Park, then all you're doing is just adding on to existing poles. And it's three I's, which I think is the one that should trouble us, because I don't have, I have no idea what a new stealth structure is, and whether that could be a building or what the heck it could be. But I think we're on relatively safe grounds if we follow the same model we had at Island Crest Park and we stipulate an applicable height for that, and whether it's 60 feet or 110 feet, I'd look for guidance from staff on what that should be. But I think that gets us to where we need to get to without having to worry about screening of views.
Well, not to complicate things, but so I, little I is existing and then little two, little two I's, whatever, is a new thing, and the three I's is another new thing. And I'm not sure we want a new ball field light versus a new fake tree, mono tree or whatever it's called. But I wouldn't want to, you know, make us that we have to have a ball field light if that's new ball field light, if that's the, versus a tree, if those are the obvious.
I think the theory was, and we did the same thing at Island Crest Park, is if we got around to replacing the light standards, then they should be allowed to put it on the new light standards if they had it on the old light standards. I think that's the only reason. And since the city controls whether the light standards are going in or not, because it's our light standards, basically, we're going to decide that. And that was the only point there. But even, even three I, to be honest with you, on the structure, since the city, well, I shouldn't say the city, it's school district property, so I don't know what the school district might approve.
Okay, so, but for staff, you've heard a height, there's a height question, there's a where is it question, there's a visibility, view blocking question, and what kind of screening might there be, and a suggestion that you potentially do away with IIII. Okay? Hannah, on that one, still?
Yeah, number two, question number two.
Oh, you're...
Point moving on.
Yeah, I was going to move on. I'm on page one of the agenda bill, moving on to number two. We're in the multifamily, the multifamily zone, and you were going to jump right to that, right?
I was.
Okay. So, questions, things for staff and applicant to be aware of that are council concerns with regards to the multifamily.
I won't be here to look at it, but I know what would have been helpful for me is to visualize what 20 feet and 30% of the roof would be in that site. And, you know, both, you know, if you blocked, if you, if it became like a block, but I don't think that's what it is. I mean, it's a, you know, it's an antenna with wires and the screening, so maybe the two kind of visualizations of what that would be there in a neighborhood of 20 feet and 30% of the roof, both of just a, you know, standard block shape and of what a likely antenna with the holdup wires might be.
Well, the visualization, may I ask, you know, it's not so much, again, what it looks like on the building, it's the perspective of the neighbors. So it's the neighbor that neighbors the antenna of 30% coverage and 20 feet high, are we now, is that neighbor now going to see that antenna? That's an issue. That's the issue. And it sounds like that's the question that the representative had.
And what the screening looks like.
Yes, okay. So same questions as for the...
A view, a view, a view.
Yeah. So sort of if we put an antenna on top of this building, we wouldn't care much, but the guys in maintenance would care a lot, right? Up the hill. Right. Right, yeah. Debbie?
Yeah, and to me, I don't know how a phrase is, is a question, so I'm not going to try, maybe it's something smarter than I am, because that is, there's four corners to this intersection, and in particular, the two multifamily dwellings that are on the north side of 28th, I think it is? If you have 30% of the roof covered on each of them and they are not lined up, then in essence, you are covering roughly 60% of what might be a view corridor. So I think the extent to which we can imply some intelligence there. Now granted, it's always going to depend on what direction. But that is on a downward slope that is looking out over, you know, the western side of the island and the waterfront. So I think, you know, the quantity does become important when we're talking about actually zoning for multiple structures in a single small space, so that somehow if you can turn that into a question.
Yeah?
I think there's some more, there's some other fundamental questions. The kind, one option the council has is to just say, do nothing with this piece of property at all. It's, apparently, it's a non-conforming grandfathered use, and we've been told by the representatives for AT&amp;T that under federal law, they can expand that to the extent required by federal law, and so we can just do that. We can say, fine, go expand to the extent permitted under federal law, and we don't have to do anything with that issue. That's probably the simplest thing and the least likely to end us up in potential trouble down the road. If we want to go beyond that, then I think, I would seriously suggest the council that we limit it to the one building that we're, that now we have the non-conforming use on, and not try to do it for any of the other three corners. There's, the only justification for going beyond the existing building is because the Verizon or T-Mobile might want to put something up there, and under our existing code, AT&amp;T is required to try to co-locate, is required to make some effort to permit co-location. So I'm not, I don't think we have to be overly concerned about that, but I just, I think there's been no case made at this point for going beyond the existing building. And, and I think the question we should be voting on at some point is whether we just go with the existing federal standard for increases in that facility, or if we're not going to do that, then do we need to cut it back beyond the 20 feet and 30%?
Okay. Anyone else? George? Scott, you've got enough to work with on that one? Okay. Number three, small cell facilities and antennas up to three cubic feet and associated equipment in all zones. So this one's obviously a hot topic. Deb, you want to start?
I'm just going to continue with where we were a couple minutes ago, and that is, I would like to understand from staff what review process that you would recommend for the placement or application and placement of those.
Benson?
I think I just, I would like to have an idea of where these small cells might be located, whether or not they, right now, they're, they could be anywhere on the island, and the question is maybe they should be identified in certain areas and limited to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that personally, I would, I would strip small cells out of the bill completely at this point until, and have planning commission working with staff and the utility companies come to us with a meaningful proposal on, for doing this, these systems that we can actually have some regulatory oversight of. Right now, it's just, it's far too loose, and even if AT&amp;T comes back to us and says, well, we're only going to put in 50, and they're only going to be at the south end of the island, it's, that's not what this ordinance says, and we have no assurances that the next utility company won't come in and want something different. Yeah, we just need, I think from the discussion in the council right now, it's very clear that we're very uncomfortable with the ambiguity that's in here and not knowing what we're going to end up with. And until staff come back to us with a much tighter program that can give us some assurances as to where this is going to go, and that they're going to be limited in numbers, and that this is, and it's, maybe it's a situation where it's, it's because there's no other alternative than some standard like that, then I think, I don't think this is, should be going anywhere, to be honest.
Mike, and then Benson.
Well, I think AT&amp;T, I know they have this product, should show us the dead spots and what the small units will resolve, and certainly, I'm not for island-wide authority to put the small boxes wherever they would like, but I think they should justify it to improve the service, and then the council looks upon that with a critical eye and balances improved service to any negative impacts that it has to the neighborhood. So again, my ask, I will repeat again, is that AT&amp;T comes and justifies small units according to the improvement in service by eliminating dead spots.
Benson?
Yeah, I just, just a general comment, and that is, you know, one of the problems I've had with this ordinance was, again, that it was, and again, that criticism of the staff, because I understand that the staff was just presenting what the applicant provided. But I think it's difficult for me, and I don't know about the rest of the council members, that if we are simply being given something that the applicant has drafted, I don't know what the options are. I mean, again, they prepared something that they want, which makes sense. On the other hand, if we're going to try to understand it, and we need to know what our options are. And so, you know, I realize that's a resource issue, staff issue, but if we can get some feedback so that we know where we have options, that would certainly be helpful to, as we look at this ordinance.
And if I could, what that sort of boils down to is, at a first level at least, what federal policy requires us to accept, right? And then beyond that becomes a question of what more, or state, state code says, and then beyond that, it's what more we might wish to do. Jane?
Well, I agree that we need a lot more specificity about the small cell networks, how they would interact with the taller towers, where they would be. And also, I'd be curious to know about co-location. Is it possible, advisable, or even, or not, for companies to co-locate the small cells? Or would we be having utility poles just dotted with little boxes all the way up and down? I'd need to know about co-location.
Speaking for myself, I was observing that there were two photos. One showed two small boxes near the top of a pole, on the pole, and then a medium-sized box partway down the pole, and a second one showing boxes stood off from the pole. Attached to the poles, less sort of visually impactful than set off from the pole, and I'd want to understand better how much, how big this thing has to be or gets, or why. And then with respect to the box lower down on the pole, if I understood correctly, what the code is proposing is something much larger than what was visible in the picture. And so I'd be concerned about understanding more about why, what does it look like in a worst case, and why, why are we looking for a worst case if worst case isn't what's going to happen? So that I understand that better. It was mentioned that these boxes might end up at ground level, too, if I'm not mistaken, and what are the implications or impacts of that? It seems, seems to be another intrusion, potentially, that we would want to be able to manage or preclude.
The point you made, Bruce, is I think, let me take that one step further. You mentioned that we have it with the federal requirements and we have everything else. I'm very concerned, just listening to this discussion, that we're telling staff to do a tremendous amount of work before they come back. And I think it's appropriate thing to put on staff's work plan for 2015, but we know that Development Services has a huge amount of stuff on their plate that we're already giving them with the town center, which I think everyone in this council would agree is a much higher priority. I wonder, when we finish this discussion, I'd like at least one up and down vote on whether we just tell staff on second reading to come back to us with something that just says, you know, we'll change our law to the extent required to comply with federal law, and then put on the work plan everything else we've talked about, and come up with some process to deal with it when time permits, and just leave it at that. Because the last thing I want staff to do is spend the month of January and February working on all the stuff that we're talking about here, because it's a huge undertaking. And in the grand scheme of events, I don't think it's anywhere near a priority for what we've got going on in the city.
Wow, that's an interesting comment. Noel, you want to try and tackle how you would parse this from a priority?
Yes, I always appreciate council looking out for our workload. And Dan is correct, there is, you know, we're in a period now where DSG has record permit activity and application in the door that we need to process, along with everything we're trying to do in the town center analysis. So there is a real crunch right now for DSG staff. So if there is a way to narrow this or spread this out over the year, I would be very much in favor of that.
Well, I mean, you're going to present at the planning session, you're going to, you're going to plug it in the planning session, and that will be a function of where you can fit it in.
Right, and so if we...
I don't think we've specified that it's got to be done at the next meeting.
Maybe, Katie, is there anything that forces us onto a timeline for this, or George?
Yeah, we have a formal application, so under state law, we have so much time to process the application. So we have to make a decision on the application unless the applicant agrees in writing and the city agrees on a certain amount of time to extend that timeline for review.
Let me ask a question. I mean, this has gone through how many meetings with the planning session?
Planning commission was two, I believe.
I mean, those are smart folks there. I'm sure they've answered, they've asked many of the questions that we've asked, and haven't they? Didn't they?
I wasn't there on that second one.
And it's going to be research that you possibly have already done, but just for one reason or another, it's not presented to us?
No, you guys have some great new questions that wasn't asked at the planning commission. The only ones, honestly, that I'm thinking, let's see, how are we going to do this on such an existing workload, is kind of some type of photo simulations that I'm hearing from several different angles, and, you know, we don't typically do that. I'd probably lean on the applicant to provide them, and applicants do that all the time, but the photo simulations probably aren't from the perspective and the angle that you might like. I noticed the, my experience when I get the photo simulations and applications that are required is they're taken from a quarter mile away, and the cell is that big, and it's behind some trees, and you can barely see it. So, you know, I don't, I haven't done a lot of photo simulations, I'm pretty good with Photoshop, but I give a shot. You know, I mean, or we farm it out to somebody, and I don't think we have consultant budget for that, so maybe we'll find a way.
George, what is the timeline on which we need to manage through this?
Yeah, it is 120 days, yeah, quick, and I don't, I don't know where they are on that time clock. I think one of the things we might ask the applicant is, hey, given where this is going, applicant, would you appreciate an opportunity to provide more information to city council and be willing to extend that clock? I'm probably guessing they'd be willing to do that, given, given the alternative on that.
Let me, let me suggest that we do have a planning session coming up. Let's, we'll put a slot of time in for staff coming back to us... Let's, we'll put a slot of time in for staff coming back to us and telling us what you have learned about how you want to propose that we go forward with this at that time.
Hold on, can, what is 120 days? When is that running?
It started September 24th.
September 24th, 2014.
So you're butting up against that in January.
Yeah.
So you're there by the planning session. So we don't have that luxury anymore. I don't know, but apparently we have to either make a decision or whatever the other--
Let's, I mean, planning session's 20 days away.
I know, but that's, that's 120 days. So you're up against, you're literally at 120 days at the planning session and you still haven't taken any legislative action at that point. So I think what staff had in mind was we were going to do this first reading tonight and second reading at the next council meeting that kept us within the 120 days. So I will throw it out again for the council and prepare to make a motion that we come back on second reading with just adopting what is required by federal law and rejecting everything else and then put it, put on something on a work session to work with AT&amp;T and other utility companies, to other cellphone companies to come up with potentially some ways to approach this.
Katie, can you speak to whether that works from a staff perspective? Or George?
I'll say at this point, sure of the applicant agreeing to an extension, so pressure. I think we have to do something like that in order to accomplish the intent of having the deadline and being able to finalize the application. So I guess, I guess it's up to applicant unless you want to extend the application period and we can work through the pieces of it.
I don't think I'd ask them to make that call tonight.
Right.
I think that the, the question is, do we direct you to simply do that or do we direct you to try and swing a deal with the applicant to get an extension and do more or do that?
Do both.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the question, I think.
I don't, I don't understand, and Bruce, I just don't understand why we, we're going to end up in the same, exactly the same place. I'm just saying we take the pressure off us. The applicant gives us 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, even another 120 days. In terms of the priorities of our development services staff right now, spending the time to create what is a significant regulatory structure to deal with, for example, small cells, which is going to be the big issue here, it's going to take a fair amount of time to do an intelligent job with this thing and there's no reason we should be under the pressure to do that. We'll get it done in 2015 in an orderly manner, hopefully addressing, maybe getting these cellphone companies to agree with Jane's approach that they need to figure out co-location issues. I mean, but having a process that we go through here, much like we did when we did the original cellphone ordinance, cell tower ordinance. I mean, we've been down this road before and it was many years ago, but we got to a solution back then. We did it methodically and right now, all we've got to do is just approve what is required by federal law and we don't do anything else. And this thing got dropped on us, none of us were expecting this. We've had notice, this is the first time we've discussed it at the council level and it's going to take some time, that's I think we've realized.
Well, let me ask you about the small cells, what, that it is, whether it is a big deal or not as far as island coverage. I mean, granted that regulation's been presented to us that they want a blanket rule on the small cells over the island, but I'm, I know the AT&amp;T, again, has a map showing dead spots where the small cells would be required. And then, so, you know, it may only be one or two neighborhoods in, on the island that is a concern and we could quickly scale down the coverage of the small scale just to those--
But then you've got Verizon, you've got T-Mobile, you've got Sprint, they're all going to have the same issue.
Then they bring it to us. They, and you know, actually it talks about that in regulation, that the carrier presents to us the argument where they need additional facilities to improve the service on the island.
And I agree with you, Mike, but that's what the structure should provide. It should provide a regulatory framework so whether it's AT&amp;T or Verizon, they've got to come to staff and make the case for why they need X, Y, and Z and how they can do it using co-location, using whatever it is. But you have a process then and somehow staff working with the cell companies need to devise that process to reach that exact result. We're not going to do that in the next 60 or 120 days. There's, you're right, there's a way this can be solved, but they need to work on that and there's no reason our staff should be under a lot of pressure to get that done in the next few months.
Well, is that, that big of a deal to draw up the process for how they, how they, the carrier presents the documentation of dead spots on the island?
I think the problem really is that our staff has no experience dealing with cell tower ordinances or anything like that. It's not something they deal with on a day-to-day basis. So they ended up relying upon the Bush firm to do the drafting on this thing. Probably they're going to need to get some outside expertise to help them figure this out.
I don't think they need outside expertise.
Pause, pause, I don't think we're in a good direction with that. What I, I think Dan has hit the nail on the head in the sense that if, this has to be done at the next meeting realistically to meet the timeframe, the only thing we have the option of doing is the simplest thing. And Scott, you're coming up to redirect me. But I, it seems to me that, yeah, let's, I'm going to be supportive of Dan's suggestion that what we do is, let's get the minimum done right now. Let's discuss at the planning session how we go forward with more and the assumption being there that we're trying to lay out a work plan or the staff's trying to lay out a work plan for us for what more they recommend we do based on what they've heard from the council here.
What would that look like, the minimum, if we go along with Dan's idea?
Well, it's, that's back to staff to say, what is, what is the fed, what is the federal requirement for us to do?
I would go along with that.
Okay? Noel is nodding his head. Jane's nodding her head. I need more. I've got four council members nodding their heads.
Yeah, okay.
And Katie?
To do what?
Scott and George, you okay with, put together an ordinance, does the minimum require it to by federal law, bring it back to us at the next meeting and then bring us a suggested work plan to the planning session for doing more if you think that's appropriate?
Okay.
Can I ask one of the council, a request for information at the next council, yeah, at the next council meeting? And that request for information is to just to tell the council what hazards there are for both the main towers and the small cells, considering that they're in single-family housing areas. And when I say dangers, I'm talking about that electric, magnetic pulse or whatever. If there is any--
Yeah, you can't go there.
You can't go there.
You can't go there.
A little lot of, a little lot of--
A little lot of people are going to go in there.
I'm glad you all remember that, thank you Dan.
Scott, Scott and George, when you're doing the federal thing, I'd like it if you can make, clarify exactly how many times, you were saying during the break, George, that the 2000, that those federal changes tie back to what the situation was in 2012? So you can't just every six months invoke one of those expansions and keep going up 10% or 20 feet or whatever it is. So it's a one-time thing or it's an aggregate thing? But just to make it clear that that's in fact what's, how this, how those federal provisions work and also to try to ascertain whether in fact you can use one of those federal provisions, for example, to exceed 110 feet. So if you're now at 110, does that federal law require that we allow them to go to 120 or 130 or are we allowed to still cap it at 110? So if they're at 80, they can maybe go to 95, but they still maxed out at 110. So I don't, I reading that, it wasn't clear to me what the ordinance provided. I have no idea what that federal FCC order did, but I like to believe that we could still cap it at 110 and they're just allowed to go up, you know, by that federal rule but not exceed 110. If you tell me that's not the case, so be it. But just so we have it very clear in the ordinance, what exactly, how that federal, that federal thing works.
Yeah, we can do federal law, do a better job of explaining, yeah, we'll do right next one.
Okay. Okay. Applicants, any final words you want to deliver here, your opportunity? And thank you all for bearing with us as we've wound through a fairly tortuous path on this one.
And we do appreciate that it, you know, especially with one meeting.
It's very difficult to get through all the material. We had the benefit of a, of a good study session with the planning commission before they actually had to take up the issue to really provide direction. I think that really helped, particularly on the small cell issue. So I appreciate that it's a lot of material to take in, particularly in one night. If I were to make just one recommendation, you know, I think the idea of taking small cell out and potentially putting that on a longer-term track or perhaps assigning it the most difficult, say, conditional use permit process or something of like that nature, you know, I think that's something we might be, we would be amenable to and we're also amenable to extending the clock to see if action could be taken. But the, you know, certainly the proposals as it relates to obviously the changes in federal law and then also the being able, the modifications to the existing facility in multi-family zone as well as the potential for a facility in the, in the playfield. Those are, those are things we would, we would like to see some action on in terms of if that is a proposal that the council would be willing to consider. And then taking small cell out and perhaps putting that into a longer-term track as, as Deputy Mayor Grass has suggested, might be, anyway, that'd be a proposal. Rather than just doing just the federal law, at least considering those two issues since those issues tend, appear to have a little less question, certainly than small cells, which has certainly a lot of issues. And so we're just going to suggest that as a potential option.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the playfield you are suggesting keep in and what was the other?
The multi-family.
Multi-family's sounding a little more complicated to me, but the playfield sounded a little less so. Is there any enthusiasm?
I'd like to suggest that we consider the pole at the playfield and nothing else tonight.
But with federal and the pole and the pole. The federal we have to do.
Yes, and the federal, but not talk about a small cell or the multi-family area.
And the pole and the playfield, I think we got that one pretty much nailed. You have to tell us, is it, did you want 110 or 60 were you shooting for?
I'm sorry?
Were the height limit is 110 or it's 60?
I believe it was 110.
So I think you just need to come back to the staff and tell us what those poles are now at and what we're, what we're talking about.
Yeah, and then the clarification, the one thing I think that also didn't get fleshed out is on the multi-family zone on the northwest of the property. Keep in mind, AT&amp;T has antennas on one of the existing buildings, but also it has equipment under the adjacent building under the same ownership. And, you know, our proposal is eventually we would like to have the option of being able to provide a facility on that other building and have them to build, so the existing facility and the one, because again, it's their separate parcels, but it's the same thing. That's the reason why that is important to us, to be an option of being able to upgrade that facility.
Okay, so council, I'm looking for thumbs up, thumbs down on doing the playfield as part of this measure coming back to us next week. Is that amenable? Okay, yeah. The multi-family, I'm thinking still more complicated and we're going to want to talk views and things, but is there enthusiasm for trying to get that done in one week?
I don't see it as an issue if staff walks around and, I mean, I'm going to walk around and looks to see from the perspective of the neighbors if it's, if that new antenna, if the new antenna on the new other house restricts views at all. You know, that's a yes or no type of question.
And we would provide those photo simulations support as staff is, whatever viewpoints they would like to see, we're happy to provide those.
You know, if, if the proposal is just to limit the, on the multi-family, just to those two parcels where they have equipment, I would probably amenable to at least trying to get that resolved. Is that on the north side? Yeah, and not, not the other two parcels.
The northeast corner.
All right, so I'm, I need a thumbs up, thumbs down to get to whether we have a consensus on this one. So I'm going to go that way. One, two, three, we're talking about multi-family.
That's your last.
Oh, no, last vote. Go for it. Tiebreaker. All right. Okay. Trying to put together the playfield language for us and federal law. Thank you very much. And to Kristen and Carol as well, thank you very much. Okay, we are done with this agenda bill that we thought was going to go quick and I was quite wrong about that. We move to Agenda Bill 50027, zoning code text amendment related to stage theaters as accessory uses to places of worship, second reading. Manny did give up and I was, but I suggested he give up, so.
Scott Greenberg, your Development Services Group Director, I'll keep it really short. You saw this at your meeting in December, directed us to make some changes to remove the age restriction on who can be in these theaters. We remove that age restriction, you have the amended ordinance in front of you and we are recommending approval.
Okay. Discussion, questions first? I don't think there should be any questions at this point, any discussion? All right, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 15C-03, amending MICC 19.02.010A to allow theater programs as an accessory used to places of worship.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, excellent. We move to Agenda Bill 5030, City of Mercer Island, 2015 State Legislative Priorities. Can hand them right off to our legislator who can take them away from the meeting tonight.
Should we have cell towers?
So as Ally knows, I had tried to make a proposed change, I wasn't very clear about it, but under the environmental health legislative priorities, I intended to strike, there are now four, they're really, the intent was to have two replace, the top two replace the bottom two. So my intent would be to strike the bottom two in that section, which are not as well worded or current as the top two. Are there any other changes folks wanted to see to this?
Just under the housing legislative priorities, just wanted to clarify that first bullet point with some clearer language.
I'm sorry, you're where?
The under housing legislative priorities, restore the housing trust fund. I just have some wording that's a little bit more accurate on that. Do you want me to give you the wording again?
Why don't you, yeah.
Okay. It would be to restore full funding of the housing trust fund for affordable housing for our most vulnerable citizens. So that it's not restore the housing trust fund, it's restore full funding of it. And then I just thought we could throw in something like for affordable housing, just to be clear, for our most vulnerable citizens, from homeless youth to seniors. But the addition--
We just really aren't going to respect that one-page limit we put on--
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. And I would, I would, I'm saying, I'm, I was trying to come up, we can cut some words, but there has been an effort to focus on homeless youth when we talk about schools and educational outcomes. And so a lot of people have been talking about, in terms of housing for homeless youth, which there are now 38,000 in the state. And then seniors is also another area where there's been a drop-off over the past decade in housing for seniors and I thought that was more kind of applicable for our, our community and something that, that I know Debbie has raised in the past too. So I thought it might be a good message to include there.
So, Mike, I hear you down there wanting to say something. Is it on this or is it on something else?
Well, I mean, to be complete, then you'd put veterans in there, so normally when you talk--
I would accept that.
Oh, you did say that?
No, she didn't.
I would think that'd be great. Yes.
So we did say we were going to try and keep this to a page.
It still is.
And you've caught all the language that, okay. Got veterans in it?
Yeah, so it's--
The type got smaller.
Yeah, it's at eight point. Says restore full funding of the housing trust fund for affordable housing for our most vulnerable citizens, from homeless youth, youth to veterans and seniors. Does that sound okay?
Sounds okay to me. Sound okay to others? All right, and it still fits? It's all thanks to me taking out two lines. Okay, any other comments, discussion, debate about the legislative priorities? All right. Looking for a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt the City of Mercer Island, 2015 State Legislative Priorities.
As amended?
As amended, yes.
Okay, so I'm not going to approve this because there are too many things in here that, that are big deals, which I don't at all support. And I'll quickly go, go down the list. You know, the first bullet right there, transportation funding legislative priorities, it's an afterthought about not including I-90 tolling. I-90 tolling-- I-90 tolling, it's still not a dead issue out there, even though Senator King and Representative Clifford sent that letter. I'm not hopeful, just from what Senator King said in today's paper on the editorial about the governor's transportation package, I'm not hopeful that they're not going to go back to looking at tolling I-90 when the carbon tax doesn't pass a House and Senate that I think the majority don't really necessarily look at a carbon tax as being a wise tax. The public bidding laws, unfortunately, Representative Sen, you know, that's adding additional, that's diluting unnecessarily what's already there, the good stuff, you know, and I just did a quick research, RCW 39-04-350, bidder responsibility criteria, so it's already in the code that we don't need that, that the bidding laws legislative priorities, because it gives municipalities, i.e. if a state or municipality determines they bid to not be responsible, the state or municipality must provide in writing the reason why they're not a responsible vendor, and then we don't have to accept the low bid, as I read the existing regulation. Property taxes, we don't need, if we increase the property tax ceiling that the council can increase, then that's what the council's going to do, councils will increase their property taxes more than the 1% that we can, and that's not good to increase property taxes, as I've said many times, without going to the public, asking for their approval, if you will, to increase property taxes. Because remember, every time we increase property tax or increase taxes, we decrease the affordability and independence of our citizens out there, especially those tittering on the edge. Increase rates on infrastructure funds and restore the state commitment to investment public, this is an interesting bullet right there, and I think, you know, we talk about what the priorities are, but by putting this as an issue that we are against rating the infrastructure, negates why it was looked upon to balance the budget without raising taxes, it was, it was, the funds were used because the legislature prioritized education, and that's a good thing. It's a good thing. So, we don't want, we don't want to send a wrong signal that prioritizing education is a bad thing, and that's what that does. The reason those funds, those funds went to finance education, it showed where the legislature's priority was, and that's a good thing. The statewide price on carbon pollution, you know, that's an unproven, we don't want to push that, because that's an unproven tax. I was just up in Vancouver on vacation, and on the editorial page of Vancouver of all places, it talked about the negative aspects of the carbon tax, and even on the others, there's plenty of other documentation showing that it hits the low income the most, and we already have a carbon tax out there. It's called a gas tax. I mean, what is gas? Gas is carbon going out the tailpipe, so it's already there, it's the most efficient carbon tax, and it's as efficient tax as you can get, and the argument that, the argument that a carbon tax won't filter down to the individual is incorrect. I mean, it will get passed on, companies will maintain their profit margin, and companies will pass on that carbon tax to the individual. And for those four or five reasons, I'm not going to support this.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Gosh. I'm sorry.
Now, how do we handle that?
Yeah, change your vote.
No way. You got me. First of all, you reduce me in size, and now this.
All right, do we move to other business? May?
Yeah.
May. Thank you. Councilmember absences, obviously we have none this evening, any, yeah, she's going to be absent for quite a long time. So, I did ask the question of you, and maybe we'll do that here, well, no, let's do that under planning schedule, let's do the planning schedule, and then we'll talk about it.
Yeah, no, I don't really have anything to add tonight in reference to the planning schedule itself.
Okay, so, what, Dan suggested we tee this up now, and I thought it was a good idea. Historically, we've bumped into things like holiday, you know, Jewish holidays, we've bumped into school vacations, things that cause us, that would cause a number of council members to be absent, are times when we think about whether we ought to move a council meeting to accommodate the needs of multiple folks. And so, now, for the first half of the year, the question is, is there anything that you think rises to that level and would be appropriate grounds for moving a meeting? Debbie?
Yeah, if I understand correctly, Mercer Island Public Schools are out for spring break the week of April 6th, and I know that I will be gone.
Let's see, April...
They're also out the week of February 17.
Yes.
Yes, but I will be here for the 17th, I won't be here for the 6th.
So, let's do February first, just because it comes earlier in the calendar, and then we'll jump back to April. So, February, it's the week of President's Day, we have our council meeting set for the Tuesday, that's the 17th. I will be gone that day, I will also be gone, though, the following week, and so pushing it out a week doesn't do me any good. So, from my perspective, I don't care where it, unless it lands the week earlier, it doesn't work for me either way. Debbie would, and others, who are, let's see, Tana, another parent, doesn't matter to you, Benson, doesn't matter to you, Mike, you don't have kids in the school system at this point, right?
Well, I have kids in school group.
No, but not in the Mercer Island.
Actually, but they're vacation correspondence.
Okay, okay, so, Mike, what's your...
I don't, I mean, I don't, I can't plan that far out with my family, but we're working on it. We're trying, I'm telling you. But I don't anticipate, I do anticipate it would be inconvenient for me on the 17th, let me put it that way.
Okay, and Debbie, you said you are in town for the 17th?
We are in town, and appreciating the fact that you are out that week, and the following week, and then Mike, it's inconvenient for you on the 17th. It, I don't know, but the rest of the council members, it will be back-to-back sessions, February 2nd and February 9th, but...
That's coming right after the planning session.
Yep.
Yes, it is.
So, what do I mean? I think we're better off February 7th, move it out to the following week in February.
And then you would miss...
Yes, you're welcome to. So, what's proposed then would be the 23rd, and I'll just miss it, which is, which is fine. Does that work for anyone else?
Boy.
Okay. Andy, I have the reins. Noel, from a staff perspective, are you okay with that?
They're all leaving.
Okay. Okay, so the 17th meeting is moved to the 23rd.
Self-power.
All right, and then, assuming there's nothing else, let's move back out to April, and so the break, school break is the week of the 6th through the 10th of April. I know that one doesn't work for me either.
I don't anticipate that'll work for me either.
Okay. And you're out as well, so we lose three of us. 30th is probably more convenient in the sense that it's actually a three-week break between the March meeting and that meeting, so I might suggest that the 30th makes the most sense, just from a standpoint of spreading meetings out.
Same march, 30th?
Yeah, rather than going to the 13th week, which would put it up against the 20th.
That's Tom's birthday.
Ah, well, not to be, you're going to have to come back. So, is there any objection to moving it to the March 30th week? Okay. Ally, work for you?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, any other conflicts that people are aware of that would significantly conflict with people's schedules? Okay.
Well, I should bring this up, I'm on baby watch, my daughter's expecting her first in Salt Lake City, so I'm going to take off whenever, whenever things start happening, so...
Could you tell your daughter the council schedule?
Babies are not very good at planning, so...
But this could impact the planning session, right?
Well, I hope not.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to be, I'm going to be consulting city.
Yes. Okay. Other upcoming absences we should be aware of? All right, yeah, Tana, sad, sad. Okay, we move to board appointments, there are none. Council member reports. Mr. Ciro?
No, just, let's see, you went to Hawaii, Mr. Mayor, and you know, the...
I did.
The Instagram, crazy look, what is that picture floating around with you with the umbrella drinks and some, I'm telling you, you gotta be careful with that stuff.
There is not.
But it is.
I didn't get a single umbrella drink, and I'm a little bitter about that. That's why I know there isn't.
I don't have anything.
All right, Jane?
Well, you probably heard about the damage to the gateway.
Sculpture.
Yeah, the sculpture, sadly, the, the whole half-wall was damaged, and a couple of the silhouette figures, as well as the number, the gnome three, the, one of the, yeah, anyway, so I'm sure we'll find out what the damage is and how they can be repaired. It was unfortunate, a driver was having a medical issue and somehow ran into them, so...
Yeah, so we're looking now at what the cost of the damage is. Those of you who might not have heard about it, a driver came off a 90, was, I think, having a diabetic episode and lost control of their vehicle. I think what we've heard is the driver's okay, fortunately. Fortunately, no one else was standing around there, because they came off at a good clip of speed, so the only fatalities were the gnome and one metal figure, that it was bent all the way back down to the ground. So, we're valuing that now, we've contacted insurance, and I'll work with their insurance and get it sorted out.
The driver's things?
Yeah, from what we've heard, the driver's okay.
There will be a gnome service.
And I just wanted to remind people of the Health and Wellness Fair this Sunday, 10 to 2, January 10th, at the Mercer Island Community and Event Center. There's exhibitors, classes, a kids' area, activities, and it's going to be a really good first annual event, so that's it.
Very good. Yeah, no, Debbie?
Well, I just have to commend the Parks Department, because it was December 24th in the morning, I was walking through the woods, and there was a tree down, and I sent Bruce and Jason an email, and then I was coming back with my mom, and there was a Parks guy coming down into the woods, he's like, "Have you seen the tree down?", and he was ready to remove it, so it was like, within a matter of 45 minutes, they had cleared a path and everything else, and given that it was December 24th, I thought that was impressive service, so...
Well, I complained it took a week.
That does say something, doesn't it? No comment?
I'll go ahead and put my Parks flag in, too, I had the same issue about Pony Park, there was an issue, I said, "Do you guys have any extra gravel?", there's a huge, you know, hole, and by the time I went there next time, it was already filled, it was pretty, pretty stellar from Jason and Glenn, so. I obviously have to say thank you guys for everything, for the warm comments tonight, but for your, you know, being such fabulous colleagues, and I will truly miss you guys, and clearly in total denial, this is really my last meeting, but I know that I will continue to work with you guys, and work with lots of other city councils, so I have no doubt I will continue to be around and see you guys on the island, and hopefully, social activities as well, and just, it's been amazing, and good luck in your selection process, and you've got some really strong candidates, you've got a strong community, and so I was confident that we would find placement, and I know there's a number of people you can't go wrong with, so, good luck on that, and again, thank you so much, I will.
And we're going to staple the legislative agenda to you as you go out.
Make you look like yourself.
Benson?
Well, this is more of a dry note, so it's always tough to follow, but at the end of the year, I attended this exit interview that was conducted by our State Auditor's Office, and it was basically to review the city's financial records reporting as of the end of fiscal year 2013. And so, Assistant City Manager Chip Quordle, Francie was there, and LaLanne were there, and the folks from the Auditor's Office were there, so it was a good meeting, we have a clean bill of health, there's a clean opinion, and so, it's kudos to our staff for the hard work that they do, and basically, there was no findings at all, and so, there are just a few things that they would suggest, but they were non-material, so, again, kudos to our staff. There was also, I'm assuming that, Mayor, you're going to talk about the Climate Solution meeting on December 9.
It's been so long.
I know, but you hosted it.
Please do, because...
Yeah, so, there was a meeting on December 9 at the community center, and the mayor welcomed the attendees, he may have forgotten, but Ross shared with the attendees what the city's been doing in the area of sustainability, and mentioned the Solarize campaign. It was also a time for Climate Solutions to basically brief the city and county officials on this Washington State Legislature, and what cities and counties can do as far as promoting clean energy, so...
That is, all right, very good. Let's see, you have all received a calendar for interviews with leader, the staff leadership, and so, I expect we will be seeing a lot of each other this week, Wednesday and Friday, as we're having those interviews. Tana, if you have input for me, I would welcome that input, too, this is, this is, this is towards the city manager's review, so I, and to that end, Mike, thank you for giving me your input, but I'll be looking for input from other council members, too, that can happen, probably, let's call it by this weekend, I'd like to see that come in, so that, along with the reports coming from the meetings we're having with the leadership, I'll be able to start to distill that into a review. Metro and Metro Service reconstruction for the island, there is a survey proposing a reconstituted route, or a couple of options for a reconstituted route, that is being proposed. The survey will be ready to go out in the next 24, 48 hours, I think. Kristen, if I understood Ashley right when we talked to her today, so just be aware that that's out there, and I would ask you to help promote that once, once that is out there. And to that end, Benson and Dan, before you get out of here, I'd like to talk about scheduling a next block of time with Metro and with the staff.
Yes, a question on that survey real quick, that there is a question corresponding to the cost, that it will cost the, so often we, in government, we just say, "Do you want this, do you want this?", without juxtaposing the cost to the citizen, so I just suggest for it to be a...
Not quite the way you would probably hope for, there is a question that tries to get at that with shorter and longer routes, and pointing out that shorter routes are cheaper. So, you'll see the survey, though, and feel free to give feedback when you've got that. You know... I understand. At the end of the day, it would be up to this council to decide whether we, whether we go forward with the service or not, so...
Right, but you want, I mean, we don't have to talk about the randomness of the survey, which it won't be, but the, we need to improve our surveys so they tell the citizen that this service comes at a cost, and this is the cost, not, it'll cost more, but, I mean, you know the deal.
I do, and part of the issue is that we don't know yet the cost, we're going to have to sort that out.
Well, I mean, actually, we do, we do, because Metro publishes a per-hour cost.
Unfortunately, we're not operating in that realm with this, we're operating in a much cheaper realm, so, more details on that to follow. But you're right, if we were operating in that realm, it would also be more than any of us are willing to stomach from a cost per... of us are willing to stomach, from a cost perspective, I think. That's all I've got, so Jane.
Sorry I didn't bring this up before, but I'm wondering, Noel, if you can tell me, where are we on the Town Center Code Revision timeline? When might that happen? Because I'm interested in raising the issue of whether or not we want to consider a moratorium on new projects downtown.
Well, you're going to have your next substantive discussion about it at the planning session, we're going to have the consultant come and talk about phase two of the work. Scott Greenberg and some of the committee members will also be there talking about, here's kind of what we, here's the report from this first phase, here's what the schedule and plan looks like going into the next year.
And there would be time?
There'd be time for council input on, you know, does this, does this schedule look like the one that we want to follow, are there other issues we need to think about?
And would there be time to initiate a moratorium? I mean, would be.
We can't take action.
You wouldn't be able to take action at the planning session, but if at that point the majority of the council said, "Come back to us with a moratorium at our next upcoming council meetings", yes.
Okay.
Okay. With that, we are joined. Thank you.